Good afternoon, everyone. It is 1:34. Today is the 8th of February 2022. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. We are in work session this afternoon. We have three items for work session, followed by the need for a, an executive session, a brief executive session, and then we should convene for our regular business this evening about 4:45. Thank you all for being here. We've got a nice turnout. I'm sure tens of thousands of people watching on the World Wide Web or on City TV joining those that are in our chambers today.
At least.
At least? At least, yes. Okay. Item, we have, first, we have citizens, citizen comments, and that's item 2-1. And Mr. Dotre, I don't believe we had anybody sign up for citizen comments. Is that correct? Okay. So we'll move to item 2. That was item 2. Excuse me. That was item 1. Our presentations are all under item 2. First of those is item 2-1. It's the proposed 2022 housing tax credit projects. And I'll call on the city manager to make a couple of comments on this, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, as you're aware, once a year through the state of Texas, there's a program that is offered that allows applicants of qualified projects to submit a request to receive a housing tax credit, which makes generally projects that otherwise might not happen, makes them possible to happen. We are at that time of the year. Ms. Brianna Girardi, our Business Development Director, is going to walk you through the proposals that the city has received. And then later this evening on your consent agenda, you have the opportunity to pass a resolution expressing your support for each of these. Doing so allows these applicants to continue through the process. So, Ms. Girardi?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. As the city manager mentioned, today, we're going to be talking about the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Housing Tax Credit Program. We're going to focus today on the 9% credit program, and I'll explain a little bit more about that for the public's information here shortly. But we do have four projects for you all to consider later this evening. Just to give a quick overview about this program, it does change a little bit over every year, specifically in the point system and the scoring system, but generally, the program stays pretty much the same year over year. And so, as the city manager mentioned, this is one of the avenues to direct private capital towards development and preservation of affordable rental housing. So we are focused today, our projects are focused on low-income housing and affordable housing projects. This is a tax credit program to offset a portion of federal tax liability in exchange for the creation of these affordable housing units. And again, there are two different types of programs within the Housing Tax Credit Program at T D H, T D H C A, sorry. Today, we're going to focus on the 9% program. And so that is a competitive program. So far, our applicants have done an intent to apply with the state. They've gone through a self-scoring of each of their projects, and so they are now requesting a resolution of support from you all. We have the same resolution of support for each of our projects, and it's weighted exactly the same for each of our projects. And so this goes into their file, so to speak, to help with the state's scoring system as they move through the application process. I've listed the scoring criteria that the state uses when they review these applications. It is a points-based system. Each of these line items, along with several other things, are weighted with different points. And again, the applicants themselves will go through and do a self-scoring, which they've done already, and then now the final application, along with your resolutions of support, will go back to the state for final scoring. These awards are given by region. You can see on the left a map of the state of Texas with all of the regions. There's 12, I believe, or 13 that the state has divided into. We're obviously in the top left in Region 1. And then I've zoomed in a little bit closer on the right, so you can see where we are. We typically primarily compete with the city of Amarillo for these awards. And this year, there are a total of six applications in Region 1, four of which are here in Lubbock, and then two of which are in Amarillo. If you don't have any questions to this point, I'll go through the four projects that you all will consider this evening. I do believe we have representation from one or two projects with us today, should you want to call anybody up to speak on behalf of their project. We did not ask the applicants to do that, but a couple of them were able to be here today. I know some had some last-minute unfortunate illness and travel issues and things like that, so we don't have everybody with us today. Your first project is called Frontage Estates. They are proposing a location at 2549 South Loop 289, which you will recognize as the current location of the former 50-yard-line steakhouse. This is a new construction development, so they would be taking down the existing facility and putting this development in its place. They are targeting senior living, so all of the units would be for residents 55 and older, and they do anticipate having 68 units in this development. And they will be pricing all of those 68 units at the low-income price range. Our next project is Landmark on Main. You all have seen this project before. I know that they applied either in last year's application group or the year prior, 2020 and 2021 kind of run together for me these days. But this is a, located at the Lubbock Main Center at 1302 Main Street. This is new construction and adaptive reuse, so they will be utilizing some of the existing space that's in this building, what they can keep, and likely pursuing some historic tax credits on this building as well. They are also targeting senior living. They anticipate creating 52 units, and all of those will be low-income housing units as well. Your next project is The Weldon. This one is proposed in the northeast corner of Avenue U and 86th Street, so this is just east of University Avenue. This is a clean 10-acre site right now, so there is no demolition involved in this project. It would simply be new construction. They are proposing two-story townhome-style units. They are not specifying a demographic for this project, so just general multifamily, and they will, they're proposing 60 units at this site. And then our final project for consideration is the South Town Lofts. This project addresses 7708 Avenue H, which, if you put into your maps, you will not find. Our, our map system has it listed at 7708 Interstate 27, so if you decide to look at this later, I have the address that you can find it on in your map. But this is raw land as well. This is a new construction, multifamily development. They do not, they're not targeting a specific demographic either. This will just be general multifamily. They will have 100 units, 80 of which will be their low-income specified units. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you all have. As a reminder, tonight, on your consent agenda, you will consider a resolution of support for each of these projects.
Okay. Council, questions for Ms. Girardi? So Ms. Girardi, it's, at least twice in the last five or six years, just twice in the last five years, we've, we've indicated preference for one, one project. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
This year, I don't believe anybody has, we're going to consider them equally based upon what you said. You're suggesting we support them all. Is that correct?
Correct. And I have not been with the city for all of those requests, but I, and city manager can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe if there is a request for preferential treatment, then you all have considered that in the past and allowed the applicants to come to you and make that request. That request was not made this year, and so we've just done the standard scoring resolution of support across the board.
Thank you. Council, I might ask you, have you heard from any of these, Ms. Patterson-Harris, looks like you have. I'm interested in what you've heard, Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Yes, he had to be diverted in my direction, given the redistricting. He was looking at District 4 and was proud to hear that he had been upgraded to District Number 2.
It's like getting put up, put into first class? Is that what that is?
No, I had the opportunity to meet with the individuals working with this project, and I was really pleased. And the thing that was, really caught my eye is the fact that it is, we began to fill in an area, which is now District 2, that has been vacant for so long. I've also had the opportunity to research the, the company that does this, and they've done a lot of work in Texas and in some other states, New York, I believe, Georgia, Virginia, and some other places. The thing that was kind of caught my eye as well is the fact that they also continue to do the management of the facilities as well, if I'm not mistaken. So, yes, I had that opportunity, and I was, I was really excited. I had the opportunity to go through and look at all of the structures, other, the units that they had completed in these other places, so.
It's a, you know, to me, the, the interest that these developers show up front has a, it has a lot to do with me wanting to maybe give one of them preference. You know, I, I didn't know what, I get the letters because they come to the mayor, but other than that, that's the only notification I got. Also got, T D H, T D H C A sends me a summary like you saw. But, I mean, I don't know. Would you suggest that we look at this one from a preferential standpoint? I know that's later in the day, but it's, we can talk about it right now. What are your thoughts?
I, I think it's a different type of project than what we have in this particular area, and it's different in comparison to the other three. However, I kind of have to lean a little bit, you know, to in the other location right off of Avenue, the old Avenue H, now I-27, which also finds its place in District 2. So I think it's important that these spaces that have not been utilized, or they're being looked at, to begin to fill. So for me, that gets extra points.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions on the senior living projects. We know these are the developers, but who will be managing those? And can, do you have a little bit more details of some of the amenities that they will be having? And, I mean, especially when downtown is kind of, as we talked about downtown and a younger population, it's almost counterintuitive to see that you have a senior facility in downtown, which I think is great. But do you have any more details in regards to the questions that I just posed?
I may. I do not have that information with me, but I can go back and find it.
Okay. Thank you.
And you just want the amenities for senior living, correct? Okay.
Okay. Anything else for Ms. Girardi? Thank you, Ms. Girardi.
Thank you.
Item 2-2 is an update, annual update, including statistics from 2021 from the Lubbock Police Department. Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Mitchell is here today. He's going to walk us through all of the various crime statistics, call-response time, enforcement activities for calendar year 2021. And they finish that right as I got done. Chief Mitchell?
Afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. How's everyone today?
All is great.
Good, good, good. Just like in previous years, today, I'm here to review the 2021 call-response and crime statistics and enforcement activity for the Lubbock Police Department. This is a report that I enjoy giving. It gives you guys a snapshot of what we've done and what has occurred in our city over the, over the last year. So I'll get started. We're going to start off by, well, I'll, I'll preface my, my presentation with, you know, there's a lot of information that I'm going to communicate to everyone on the diocese today and to everyone out there that's in the audience and looking online and on TV. So I will be looking down at some notes, so I apologize upfront for that. But there's a lot of information that I want to get across to our public. Starting off with our, our events for last year. Last year, the Lubbock Police Department responded to or initiated just over 250,000 events with 250,506. This is up 25,401 from the previous year. We could correlate this to kind of what we went into in regards to COVID. We asked our officers to limit their contacts with people as best as they could while performing their, their official duties. When you look at these events for 2021, they're broken down into two specific categories. Ones are called, one is call for service. Call for service is anytime someone picks up the phone and calls 911. A call's a police department says, hey, I need a police officer out to my location. So when you look at our calls for service for last year, we responded to 148,547 calls for service, or 911 calls to the Lubbock Police Department. This is down just slightly at 0.1%. To put this into perspective, when you look at our calls for service over a five-year average, you're talking about just over 146,000 calls for service. So we were trending pretty average with what we do normally for a year. The other part of that 250 is our self-officer-initiated or self-initiated activity. And in these situations, this is when one of our police officers goes out and makes a traffic stop, makes a pedestrian check, a car check, fugitive apprehension, or checking a building. This is anything to when one of our police officers initiates an activity and notifies the dispatcher, hey, put me out on this type of calls for service. When you look at, when you look at what we did last year, we were just under 102,000 officer-initiated events at 101,959. You will see that this is a pretty big spike from 2020 to 2021 with 33% increase. Again, this falls back to our self-initiated activity of having the officers kind of pull back last year in regards to COVID and limiting our contact with, with our public as best as possible. As you look over our five-year running average for self-initiated activity, we averaged just over 93,000, at 93,124. So we, we're just above our five-year running average there. There are some other factors that play into that in talking to my, my command staff. In 2019, they went from a 12-hour shift to a 10-hour shift. There were some scheduling issues that went on with that, and there were some staffing issues that went on with that. So that could affect our, our self-initiated activity during those calls. This council will know, and I'll talk about a little bit, that in 2012, we went back to eight-hour shifts. That, that helped our staffing out there on the street. So when you look at our, our self-initiated activity, that's what that 33% increase or jump was in that.
You meant to say 2021?
2021, yes, sir. I'm sorry. So then you go over to the, the data in regards to calls for service the day of the week. You can see that the weekends are generally our busiest times. Everyone's home from a long week. Everyone sees, you know, you know, there's, you know, disturbance calls, everyone goes out and parties and does this, that, and the other. So that's when you're going to see our calls for service jump up. Our calls for service by hour, you can see it's our rush hour in the morning and our rush hour in the evening is when we have our spikes and everything, and then it kind of levels out and it really dips down about 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock until that 6:00 o'clock hour. So I will stop right there and see if there's any questions in regards to our department call activity.
Ms. Joy?
Give me some examples of an officer-initiated event, please?
Yeah, that's a, I'm driving down the street and I see a guy peeking into a, a car. I will tell the dispatcher, put me out at this particular address on a suspicious party. I'll get out and do that. Or if I do a traffic stop, or if there is a door open, the back door open on Target, and I'm driving through the parking lot, I say, put me out on this, and I'll do a building check. Anything that the officer initiates. And it could be, hey, there's kids playing basketball in the street, and hey, put me out on a community contact, and I'll get out and I'll play basketball with the kids or anything like that. So anything that the officer initiates, he or she initiates themselves.
But it does include traffic stops?
Yes, ma'am. It does.
Is that broken down somewhere else?
Yes, ma'am. We'll get into the whole traffic summary here in a bit.
Please continue, Chief.
This next slide, we're going to talk about our top 10 calls for service, what we see here in Lubbock in regards to our top 10 calls for service. When you look at this list, most of, everything but one on this list is the same top 10 calls for service that we saw in 2020 versus 2021. And they're pretty much in the very same order that we see them, so we stay pretty consistent with our calls for service. You see, check subject or check area is number one. That's very consistent. It was number one last year. Same thing with disturbance calls, domestic and alarms. All those were the same. You will see, and you will see that all those calls kind of went down just a little bit. When you look at traffic crashes, you see it went up pretty substantial at 24%. That, that correlates to the reckless driving at 17% and the hit-and-run crashes. Hit-and-run crashes, it actually made it to our top 10 calls for service last year. It was, it was not on that call for service in 2020. What fell out of the top 10 was the vehicle burglaries fell out of the top 10, and it actually fell to number 12. The core, I will speak more about the correlation between the traffic crashes, the reckless driving, and hit-and-runs when I get into our fatality crashes and the number of crashes that we see, that we experienced here in Lubbock last year as a whole. So I will stop and see if there's any questions in regards to our top 10 calls for service.
Anything for Chief Mitchell? Please, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
With regard to the traffic crash, I don't know if you have this information available. Could that have also been contributed to the type of weather that we actually experienced in 2021?
Yes, ma'am. There's a, there's a couple of, I guess, days, a few days in a row where we had the very icy storm that really shut down the whole state of Texas and with ERCOT and everything else. You know, there are some specific incidents where you have those icy roads. We do see a spike in our traffic accidents there, but we saw an increase generally overall. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Quick question. You may follow up with this later, Chief. But in regards to the reckless driving, obviously, those statistics coincide with tickets given, stops. Is that how you're recording this, in this percentage of increase? Does that have a correlation between stops that the officers make for reckless driving?
Well, those are top 10 calls for service, so that means someone's called us and said, hey, can you send an officer out here? Or, hey, there's a vehicle in front of me driving crazy. This is the description. So these are top 10 calls for service. When I get into our traffic summary and enforcement, I will go over a, a lot of traffic data.
I have some comments about, about that, but I'll hold them to that, that point.
So our next slide talks about our calls for service, and these are our calls for service response time. This talks about the time from when one of our community members picks up the phone and dialed 911. How fast are we getting, are, are we responding to that call or request for emergency service? So when you look at our priority one call-response time, if you look over to the right side of the page of the total response time, you will see in 2021, our total average response time, and it's important that I say average, our total average response time is 5 minutes and 49 seconds. That's down a little, that's down quite over a minute from 2020, which was at 7 minutes and 3 seconds. Again, this, this goes back to January of 2021, when we redeployed our forces into the three patrol division format. What, what we also did is we opened three dispatch channels as opposed to two. The officers were dispatched or were deployed in those three patrol division formats, even though the stations weren't open yet, they were deployed in that format. This helped us reduce our response times. Also, going back to the eight-hour shifts, helped us reduce our response time because we were able to better staff each of the patrol shifts at each of the divisions. One of the difficult things that we had to do as a command staff is make the decision to go from 10-hour shifts back to eight-hour shifts. The 10-hour shifts are great if you have the staffing to do them, but if you don't have the staffing to do them, you are basically staffing an extra shift of people when you don't have it to cover that 10-hour shift. So, yeah, those are difficult decisions. It's not conducive to, you know, helping the officer have more time off, but we have to look at it from the standpoint of our organization and what's best for us to get to that location in a reasonable time. And what is reasonable across policing in the United States is trying to have the officer's response time less than five minutes, and we were able to accomplish that. When you look at our priority one calls for service and you look at the, the 1 minute and 12 seconds, that is the time from the person calling 911, one of our dispatchers picking up the phone, getting the information, identifying who the person is and exactly what they are and what needs to be dispatched to that location. Is it police, fire, and EMS? Is it all three? That call taker takes that information, formulates a call for service, and ships it over to the dispatcher. The dispatcher then takes that information, identifies what, what zone or division it goes to, and dispatches that officer. So that, all that occurs in that average of 1 minute and 12 seconds. When the officer receives the call and advises the dispatcher that he's, you know, en route to that call, that's when the clock starts on the police officer. So from the time the officer gets that call and travels, whether it's one mile, two mile, or whatever, that's what you see in that 4 minutes and 37 seconds, our average response time. And again, it's our average. Sometimes, the police officer is just right around the corner, and it takes no time to get there. Sometime, the police officer may be traveling five miles to get there. We may be at one of our high-peak times or maybe one of the icy road times, and it takes the officer, you know, 20 minutes to get there. A call could also be missed, could be put into the computer as a priority two call, but then they call back and say, hey, now, now the two guys that were involved in that non-injury accident are out there fighting, and it becomes a priority one call. That affects that response time because it has to be recalculated now, because now it's a priority one call for service. So that's why I want to say, these are our average response times. You're going to have those outliers, and I believe I've been contacted by several members on this diocese about, hey, why did it take 10 minutes to get to this call? Why did it take 20 minutes to get this call? That's why it takes, you know, calls are reclassified, other things go into play, or it gets pushed off to the wrong entity, or it could be a fire or EMS call. But our average response time stays underneath that five minutes, and that's a good thing. Looking at the information down below, that, that's for our priority two, non-emergency calls. And again, you can see our, our average response time for the police officer goes up to 4 minutes and 52 seconds. It's a little higher, but still underneath that five minutes, and that's what we're striving for. A lot of this information, anyone on this diocese, anyone in this audience, anyone out there in, in the city of Lubbock, can go to our websites and look at our transparency page, and you can see the exact response time, the, the average response time for the entire city. And our IT folks have actually, have it now to where you can actually go and see what the response time is for East Patrol, North Patrol, and South Patrol. So that information is out there.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I failed to get the second portion of your statement. You were making reference to some things that have helped in reducing the amount of the response time from officers. You said, because of the use of the patrol division stations and another, another item you said.
We went back to the eight-hour shifts.
Eight-hour, okay.
Yeah. That allowed us to place more officers on each shift, fill all of our, our beats, so there's an officer riding each beat most of the night. The sergeants and the, and the commanders, the division commanders do a good job when people are off sick, or if we run into, you know, a group of officers that have COVID, they're good about moving officers around to make sure we have every beat covered to try to keep this response time under five minutes.
And is that also due to the fact that we have more officers who are actually in place?
I'd like to say that is the case. It will be the case. And, and again, you guys are, you guys are so intuitive, you're getting ahead of me in my slides, but when we talk about recruitment and everything else, you know, we were able to, and I'll, I'll speak more about it, but right now, we have 33 recruits in our academy, and that, that's because of some of the changes that were made in this budget year that I'll, that I'll talk about a bit. But we are trending right where we normally were. This big group in there right now will put us over the hump and will help us out quite a bit.
Chief, I liked the, the transparency page you spoke to. I, you know, I get up once a week and check on Totino's numbers just to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing out there.
He's always a wild card. I understand that.
But I have a question. How do you, how do you get the dispatch time from 2 minutes and 14 seconds in '20 to a minute and 12 seconds in '21? That's a, that's nearly half the time. What, what gives? That, to me, that, there's got to be, there's got to be something there that you want to talk to us about.
I'm so glad you asked that. And one of those things, because I talked to Assistant Chief John Caswell, he is over the dispatch center. And one of the things we did, we went from dispatching on two channels to dispatching on three channels. That helped us out immensely because we're, we're gathering that information faster, we're getting it to the correct division, and that, and, and they are able to, to get that information dispatched. We also, we're spending a lot of money on overtime. We have a lot of dispatchers that are in training right now to get that information up. And one of the things we talked about at our last, last command staff meeting is, we will probably see a little creep up because we have so many dispatchers in training right now that it's taking a little bit more time because you have the dispatcher there, and she's trying to train someone, or he's trying to train someone, and they're trying to show them how to put that information in the computer, and that takes time for getting it out. So we, we expect to see a little rise here in the next four months, but we know what that rise is, so we're, we're paying attention to that. Actually, John gave me one more thing, and I can't remember what it was besides the three channels.
We did not hold priority one calls anymore. They're assigned to me.
Yes, yeah, yeah. The other thing was, giving the dispatchers more autonomy and authority to say that this may be occurring in East Zone, and East Zone is blacked out, or there's no officers available in East Zone, so I'm going to grab this officer and assign that officer to that call for service. So giving them the authority to do that.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Joy?
or there's no officers available in east zone, so I'm going to grab this officer and assign that officer to that call for service, so giving them the authority to do that.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Joy?
So, someone says to me, these are not real numbers, they're fake. What do I tell them?
Well, I, I think, when I first got here, we talked about, you know, when I provide you data, I will provide you the data that I have, and one of the things, one, one of the, it's not necessarily a police department capital improvement project, it's an IT capital improvement project, but it really affects police and fire. We're looking at a new CAD RMS system, and, and I, and Allison, and Casey, and, and all of my crime analysts, we purge through these numbers, because I want to give you the most correct data that I possibly can. And I always preface it, if it's, if there's a caveat to that data, I always preface it, and that's what I talked about, these are the average numbers. We can give you a spreadsheet, a green bar sheet, that has the exact time, if we need that, so these are average numbers. Are there the outliers, liars? Yes, yes ma'am, there are, but, you know, in, on average, we respond to that call for service in under five minutes. We are going to have those instances, like say, if you hit a rush hour deal to where it may have took the officers ten minutes to get there, it may have took them twenty minutes to get there, it may have took them an hour, depending on what was going on, if it was a priority two call. But on our priority one calls for service, we're going to get an officer to you as fast as we possibly can. So I would tell them, the truth is in the data, and I, I, you know, I will, I will never present to you what I believe to be bad data.
All right, Chief, please continue.
Okay, so now we're going to move into crime and traffic data. All right. So first thing I want to talk about is I want to talk about our property crimes, and unfortunately, at some point in time in most of our lives, we've all become victims of property crimes, whether someone has damaged our car, someone stole something out of our car, someone's burglarized our house, someone's took our book bag, so, but when you look at our property crimes for 2021, you will see that we experienced here in Lubbock, a nine point six percent decrease in priority one, in part one property crimes. When you follow this up with the over ten percent decrease that we experienced in 2020, you can see over the last twenty, over the last two years, we experienced almost two, twenty percent decrease in property crimes. We are trending the right way. This is especially important when you think about, we are a growing city, we have more people here than we had two years ago, and our property crimes are going down. These are property crimes that are reported, we, we are not naive to the fact that some people don't report that, hey, you know, they had damage to their car or something like that, but we can only speak to what is reported to us. And looking at the data of the information that was reported to us, we are still trending down, or trending in the right direction. When you look at burglary from a building, you see that we went down eight percent, burglary from a residence went down five percent, auto theft went down seven, vehicle burglaries two, destruction or damage or vandalism six, and larcenies went down seven percent. This is officers being out there, again, with that thirty-three percent increase in, in self-initiated activity, with them patrolling their, their beats and their sectors and their divisions, using the scissor lift, and, and just being out there, being seen, that's what this is. So I'll stop right there from a property crime standpoint.
Glad to see that Steve got a mention there.
Yes, Steve is important.
Mr. Christian?
Yeah, Chief, this is great, is there any, any correlation between these decreases and the number of home securities or commercial security systems? I know we keep data on that, I know everybody has to pay for a permit, are we seeing an increase in, in people taking care of their properties in regards to security?
I don't have the numbers on, to know if there was a significant increase in the number of alarm systems put in, or, or permits requested for alarm systems, I'm sure that we can find that for you, but I don't know that off the top of my head. You know, when you look at 2020, seeing that decrease of just over ten percent, we correlated that to, you know, again, everyone's at home and not at work because of COVID, so that went down, but then this year, again, we saw another decrease of almost ten percent. So, right now, I think part of that is still more people are working from home with that, but again, you know, we have our, our officers out there, and, you know, I always want to pat our officers on the back, I think they're doing a good job, and, you know, our property crimes detectives identifying our prolific burglars, and, and putting cases on those guys to get them off the streets, because when you look at these crimes, there's not, you know, five hundred people out there doing this, there, there, you have certain people that go out there and do these crimes, and when we talk about property crimes or theft from, from autos, there's one person going down the street lifting door handles, taking stuff out of that, well, that's just not one report, each handle that they open up, that's a report after report after report, so that, those go into that, so even seeing some of that decrease could play a part in that.
Well, I'm just glad to see that the auto burglaries and auto thefts have continually decreased, because there has to be a correlation between those decreases, and maybe people not leaving their guns or in their autos too, so I think there's something there that meshes together with that, thank you very much.
Any more questions on that slide?
Please continue, Chief.
All right. Okay, we're going to talk about our crimes against persons, and these are kind of broken down into two categories, you have your priority, your part one crimes against persons, and you have your crimes against persons in general. And when you talk about part one crimes, you're talking about your homicides, your sexual assaults or rapes, robberies and aggravated assaults. We saw a, a very slight decrease in our part one crimes or crimes against persons. This is just a snapshot, I am going to go into detail about each of these categories as we move through this presentation, but I wanted to kind of give you a snapshot of where we are. We saw a slight decrease, an ever so slight decrease. When you talk about our homicides, the thirty-one in 2021 versus the thirty-six, I am, that number, I am talking about when one human being takes an overt act to take the life of another individual, whether that be with a gun, with a knife, with some type of object, whether it be neglect of, of an apparent to, to a child or something like that. I have broken out the vehicular manslaughter and homicide, because I want to talk about those as well, because that's going to play into when we talk about the traffic data and what we've seen. But for the vehicular homicides, we saw a decrease in the number of homicides for the city of Lubbock, we saw a fourteen percent decrease. When you talk about those vehicular manslaughter's, in eight of those incidents, it was because the person was driving while intoxicated, and in three, the, the other three of those incidents were because, were for excessive speed, and in most cases, they were driving almost twice the posted speed limit when, when these occurred. So, while we saw, while we remain stagnant or saw just a slight decrease, I think this is important for the city of Lubbock, because one, we are still growing, and two, most of the country still saw a rise in their violent crime this past year. So, before I move forward, I want to talk a little bit about, because I'm going to get into homicides and vehicular, and vehicular homicides, but I want to talk about that number of sexual assaults, because it went up thirteen percent as well. That's twenty-nine more incidents. So 2020 saw a significant decrease of seventeen percent in the number of reported cases of sexual assaults. If you compare our 2021 numbers to our 2019 numbers, we actually still had a seven point seven percent decrease, just in, in comparing those two numbers. In 2020, again, because of what the, the world was going through, many of our colleges and universities were not holding in-person classes, and a large portion of our student population was not here. Couple this with the fact that nightclubs, bars, and drinking establishments were, were not open, or they had reduced capacity. We had a, a special victim sergeant Bradley McMahon doing analysis of our sexual assaults, and, and one of the things that, that, that he came away with, with that is the use of dating apps, we are seeing a huge increase in the use of dating apps, where people would meet up with their assailants to have some type of sexual encounter. Hooking up and leaving with strangers in bars on the first night that you meet them, the mutual consumption of significant amount of alcohol and drugs at, at the house or at the bar, agreeing to engage in sexual encounters with more than one person. Sergeant McMahon's analysis ended, he ended his analysis with this, he said, aside from two individual reports that do not appear to be related, he has not observed any serial sexual assault trends in the city of Lubbock. And what that is saying to our public, and what that is saying to our student population, or the parents that are thinking about sending their kid to a college town like Lubbock, is we don't have a serial sexual offender or a serial rapist in Lubbock, we have people that are putting themselves in some very difficult situations and getting out of them. One of the things that, he also talked about, Sergeant McMahon, I forgot this bullet point, was the lack of cooperation after the initial report, whether it be from, from the victim feeling ashamed, or, or just does not want to cooperate anymore. But I, I, I want to share these numbers and this information, because I don't want our public to think that we have someone out there committing a bunch of sexual assaults on the, the young ladies in, in the city of Lubbock. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions about this snapshot, I am going to delve deeper into all of the homicides.
Ms. Joy?
Do these sexual assault numbers include the Texas Tech campus?
No ma'am, if it's, if it happens on Texas Tech, it is reported to Texas Tech PD. We, we had this conversation a few weeks ago, and I can't remember who it was with, but they, if it occurs on campus, then they take that report. Most of the housing, though, for all of our students is off campus, so if it occurs off campus, we get it.
Eighty percent plus.
How would we get those numbers?
I could ask the chief there, Kyle.
Bonifat?
I'd like to know.
Okay, I can get that. Any more questions?
Okay, Chief, let's, let's take a deeper dive here.
All right. All right, so I put the slide up to kind of talks about, that depicts our homicides and kind of what categories they fell into. Again, I've pulled down vehicular homicides, because I'm going to talk about those in detail as we move along, but of the thirty-one homicides that occurred in 2021, there are only two cases in which we have not identified a subject or suspect, or which a subject or suspect has not been identified. Both of these cases are the results of drive-by shootings. The first resulted in the death of thirty-year-old Siri Domingo, and occurred September first in the sixteen-hundred block of Twenty-Eighth Street. The second case involved four-year-old Cornelius Carrington, and occurred at a house on December seventeenth in the seven-hundred block of Urseline. Our detectives are working hard to solve both of these cases, and we continue to ask for anyone's, ask anyone with information in either of these cases to contact our homicide department. In all other cases, we either have a subject or suspect identified, charged, or pending DA or grand jury review. This speaks to the level of professionalism, tenacity, and dedication of the men and women of Lubbock Police Department and of the metro squad. They are able to clear, clear these cases, they do a great job in communicating to our public, they do a great job in getting cooperation from our public, and because of that, you can see that the homicides in which someone intentionally took the life of someone else, our officers get those cases solved. I would put our homicide detectives against anyone in the United States, they do, they get a job. A deeper dive into our homicide picture. So, at the top of the chart, you, you see again domestic violence, it, it leads the category as it did last year. These are crimes of passion, crimes of neglect, and one of the most crimes for law enforcement to solve, because it occurs in the home when one, where one should feel the safest. One of the items on council's agenda today is an interlocal agreement where Arizona State University is conducting a research of intimate partner homicides. What they are going to look at is they're going to look at our data from 2016 to 2020 involving intimate partner homicides. We're going to try to identify or see if there's specific things, see if there's specific things that we can do. Okay?
Go ahead, Chief.
Okay. We're going to work with Arizona State University to see if they can help us identify any factors that we can take into consideration to try to help our victims get out of the situation before they turn deadly. You know, we know there are factors, first it starts out with just arguing, then it starts out with maybe a push, then maybe it starts out with a punch, and then it starts out with choking. So we want to partner with them, our homicide detectives, to look at our data, to see if there's any way that we can try to identify these victims before they end up dying or in a tragic situation. Following last year's trends, disputes were the result of nine people, again, this follows last year's trend as well when, when you look at our homicides. These are bar fights, disagreements over property, momentary lapses in judgment, or instantaneous loss of control. We've had several incidents where people are, are partying at one of our restaurants or bars, they get into a fight, and that fight turns deadly. Someone pulls a gun, someone gets punched hard enough to where they fall and hit their head, and they go unconscious and die, they take out blunt force objects and, and hit each other. And, and these are situations, again, that have happened because of emotions, that have happened right then and there, and, and when I look at these, it's, you know, one of the homicides that we had in 2021, the, the suspect went to the bar with the victim, and they were all partying, and they got into a fistfight, and one guy had enough of getting beat up, and the other, and pulled out a gun and shot his friend that he went to the bar with. These type of things, we just need to learn how to pull ourselves out of these type of situations, but that's what those disputes were.
Chief, roughly, of the homicides, not the vehicular totals, but roughly how many of those are gun-related? Percentage-wise?
Yeah, I can, I can tell that, I can, I know guns far outpace anything else, we've, I, I, I know right off the top of my head, we had two that were fistfights that turned deadly, where one person punched the other one, the, the one that's listed as self-defense, that was a guy came outside and saw somebody burglarizing his vehicle, got into a physical altercation with him, punched the suspect, suspect fell back, hit his head, and died. We have some that are neglect or the use of blunt force object, meaning that they took some type of object and hit the person in the head, and that person died.
But certainly the majority.
Majority, by far the majority.
It's not like it used to be, where we used to say that knives were more deadly than guns.
We had, we had one or two in there that were knives, but most of them are handguns, handguns.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, we're going to get into the, the drug and gang activity resulted in the death of nine folks, and that, that is, and, and like I say, I can come back to it, the other, the, the random ones, those are the two drive-by shootings in which I spoke about earlier, involving Siri and, and the four-year-old, I can't remember off the top of my head, Cornelius, that, that's, those are the randoms, but when you talk about the, the drug and gang that resulted in nine people, these were attempted drug rip-offs, drive-by shootings, and retaliations for involvement in drug and gang activity. Our youngest victim to a drug and gang activity was fourteen-year-old DeQuavion Trailer, and sadly, he was not alone when you talk about our youngest victims in regards to drug and gang. We had a fifteen-year-old, a sixteen-year-old, and an eighteen-year-old killed because of drug and gang activity involvement in the city of Lubbock last year, and those are our youngest victims. You know, on, on DeQuavion, that was an instance to where they were selling drugs, they posted that they had drugs, another set of kids came over there to rob them of their drugs, and they got into a gun battle, and these are kids. And, and we need our community's help to, to help us identify these kids and get them out of these situations. We know who our neighbors are, we know what they're up to, you can call us anonymously, get us that information, and we can look into it, because if you don't get these children out of these situations, these are the tragic results of what's going on. But last year, we had several young kids involved in drug and gang activity, and that resulted in, in losing their lives. So I need to move on here, all right. So in addition...
Chief, hold on one moment, Mr. Christian?
I just wanted to clarify something, Chief, you said that one of these victims had posted on social that they had the drugs?
It, it happens more often than you think, there, there are so many different channels out there, you know, and some of the channels, some of the social media channels will delete right after you, you know, you look at it, it'll, it'll go away, but the, the drug market has changed, it, it's not, hey, you know, talk to your, your best friend to find out who's, who's got the best weed anymore, it's, you know, a lot of it is, is virtual, a lot, a lot of it is, is technology-based now, and when you look at our investigations, or you look at some of, of what we're doing, is we, we have to try to follow, you know, follow the money and follow what's going on. We had a request, we, we're working on a request right now in regards to some of our sexual assault investigations, and a lot of these folks aren't taking cash anymore, they want to use these cash apps and things like that. Money is changing hands a lot of different ways now, and, and we have to stay up to speed with the technology. So circling back to our, our drug and gang, you know, in addition to the proactive patrol of our uniformed officers to combat everyday... of our uniformed officers to combat everyday drugs and gang activity, we have 111 authorized law enforcement positions assigned to our criminal investigations unit and our crime suppression unit. This includes our Texas anti-gang detectives, our narcotics and vice officers, our crime suppressing agents, our local, regional, and federal task force agencies consisting of Lubbock County Sheriff's Office, DPS, the city of Lubbock Fire Marshal Office. We have one of their members assigned to our task force. He's an equipment operator. He helps us by doing inspections in some of these locations that we can't get in as police officers. We have a lot of help coming our way in regards to combating our drug and gang activity. We have task force officers on FBI, DEA, and ATF. We also bring to bear the U.S. Attorney's Office and the U.S. Marshal Service. All of these agencies and all of our officers are working to combat the drug and gang issues that we see here in Lubbock. When you look at the slide that's on the, on the screen right now, I want to talk about our special operations and crime suppression officers and what they've done. You know, last year, they conducted over 54 targeted gang operations, made 272 total arrests. 154 of those were documented gang member arrests. 501 felony and misdemeanor charges filed by this unit. Eighty-five stolen guns recovered. Over 6,000 grams of drug seized by this one unit. You go over to narcotics and crime suppression, 596 arrests out of this unit. 605 warrants on individuals served. $2.7 million recovered in property. 57 guns recovered. Stolen vehicles, 205 stolen vehicles recovered. Last year, department-wide, we recovered, and last year, department-wide, we had over 800 guns stolen from the city of Lubbock. We recovered quite a few of those guns. When you go over to our special operations, and when you go over to our vice squad and our SWAT units, you know, our vice unit conducted 13 undercover prostitution operations. 18 sex workers were arrested for prostitution. 92 arrested for solicitation of prostitution. One arrested for promoting prostitution. That's your pimp. Conducted 17 undercover Asian massage parlor operations, and requested, we arrested 14 sex workers who were arrested for prostitution. 28 game room operations, 14 game room inspections, arrested 16 folks out of those operations, and recovered or seized over $500,000 in U.S. currency. Our SWAT officers helped out in most of these investigations. We use these officers to help us as a force multiplier. 18 high-risk warrants. These are, these are your no-knock warrants. These are, you know, these are our baddest guys, and we use our SWAT teams to go in and do, serve these warrants. We did 20 call-outs, 54 security details, and they also handled 11 demonstrations throughout the city of Lubbock. I say this to tell you that we are doing everything we can and everything in our power to address the gang and drug issue in Lubbock. Our federal and regional partners are assisting us in this. Lubbock is a growing city. We have 263,000 people in our city. I was joking with Neil that when you talk about crime, you know, other than me and my family members, everyone else is a potential criminal to me. I say that joke only to Neil. But, you know, we have to understand, this is a growing city. We are no longer a small, quiet residential place. You have 263,000 people here. We need people to take an interested effort in helping us combat crime. If you see it, call. We'll respond out there. You don't have to have a police officer come and knock on your door so you can point across the street to your neighbor doing bad things. You can let us know over the phone, and we'll get a detective out there to look into it. We're not done. One of the things that I asked Neil to do, and I should say Assistant Chief Barron to do, is to give us a solid plan as we move forward to address the hybrid gang violence. And Assistant Chief Barron provided me with his violence reduction plan, and it begins with intelligence gathering and sharing. It starts with patrol officers, spec ops, and CID personnel getting gang and suspect information out to our patrol officers in a timely manner. Patrol division stations will identify a hybrid gang liaison officer. The responsibility of this officer is to make sure that they are getting the most up-to-date information and getting it out to our officers that are on the street day in and day out. Our aggravated assault and juveniles detectives will respond out to shootings involving, shootings and robberies, any violence involving gang members when it occurs. So we can start those investigations right off the bat, identify what's going on, identify those involved, and try to get cases on them as quickly as possible. Faster scene processing and evidence. You, this council also has another agenda item for us today, to coordinate with the ATF in regards to the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network. What this does is it will allow us to say, say there is a drive-by shooting at one address, and we're able to recover shell casings. Then there's a shooting over at another location, and we're able to recover shell casings. We can compare those shell casings from those two different crimes and find out if they're connected. Then say we do a car check or a pay check on someone, and they have this gun on them. We can then take that gun, test fire that gun, and determine if that gun is used in any of those other crimes. And if that person has that gun on them, then we have people then that can go and talk to this guy and say, where'd you get this gun? And if you're, and then we can clear those cases on those other two crimes because of that. This is another initiative that was championed by Assistant Chief Barron, getting the ATF, because every city wants a Niibin machine. Everyone wants what we're getting. And him and his contacts with the ATF, and staying on them, telling them, hey, we really need this machine, and our contacts with, you know, through the tag. So that item is on your agenda as well. Our comstat presentations. In January, we started our comstat presentations, and that's comprehensive statistic analysis. And that's where you see all these faces back here in these uniforms. These are all our division commanders right now. All of them are captains, except for one, the leaf back there, he's going to be a captain this Friday. So they all have a division. And what we do is we get together every two weeks, and for everyone's situational awareness, the division commander, the patrol division commanders talk about what's going on in their patrol division, what help do they need from the others, what do they need from investigations, what do they need from special operations. Special operations communicates that information. So everyone's situational awareness is there, and everyone knows that the help is there. If we can give it to you, we'll give it to you. So that's what we're doing there. Focused enforcement and deterrence. This is focusing on known gang members. We have Texas, you know, Texas has a, it's called Tex gang. It has all the documented gang members. If you're documented in that and you're in our city, we're going to focus on you. We're going to let you know that, hey, we're going to follow you from the time you get moving and the time you go to bed. We want you to know that we're on your tail. So paying attention to the known, known locations for related drug sales and firearm violence. And then, you know, the last one that Neil has on his plan is, you know, priority case processing and prosecution. You know, better coordination with our DA's office and the U.S. Attorney's Office about moving the cases involving our violent offenders to the top of the stack. We, we know that because of COVID, our DA's office is behind. We know the courts weren't fully open, and they're trying to catch up. But our most violent offenders, we have to get them off the street so they are not around to victimize again. I will stop right there and see if there's any questions in regards to our gang and drug enforcement activity.
Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had the privilege of the last couple of weeks speaking with the chief and his team about gangs and drugs, and also with the chief, and it was a very enlightening conversations. And if you would, would you kind of explain the dynamics of that hybrid gangs to us just a little more? I thought that was interesting. It's not the old-school hierarchy gangs that a lot of us are familiar with, with the Bandidos and things like that. I thought it was very interesting that the sheriff, the sheriff said, it's not that day where you, if you were going to go kill somebody, you went and got permission. That's not the case anymore. And they're younger and more violent, too. Is that correct? And, you know, listen.
And they're younger. The term hybrid gang has really materialized over this last five to 10 years. And you're right, it's not the old, you know, I'm a blood or, and I'm a Crip, and I'm a blood, I'm a Crip for life. These are, these are one, the members are a lot younger. The range is from 13 to about, to their mid-20s. They generally go to school together, and they, and they make, and they're a clique. And they transition into doing criminal activity, whether that's drug sales, or robberies, or rips of other kids that go to their school that may be selling weed or something like that. But it's cyclical. You know, this week, you and I can be, you know, part of this clique or this gang, and then next week, you and I have a fallout, and it's usually over something like a girl. We had a situation, you know, where they're fighting over girls, so they're shooting each other's houses. That's one of the deals that we're dealing with right now, because it's happening over a girl. So it is not the organized crime families that we're seeing. We're seeing these cyclical gangs that change sets or groups every two or three months, depending on what's going on and what, which, you know, which way the wind is blowing.
Ms. Joy?
I think we have a curfew ordinance in Lubbock, do we not?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell us exactly what that entails, just brief.
So Lubbock has had, has had a curfew ordinance in place for quite some time. And it's my understanding, and I'll look back to my guys to help me out with this in case I stumble off, I forget something. One of the issues that we have is once, when it was in full swing, there was a place for us to take those kids. We dropped those kids off. The parent had to come by there and pick those kids up. So that facility is no longer available to us, or that, we don't have that anymore, or someone to man our staff at that facility. So for us now, once we pick up that kid, we have to maintain custody of that child until a parent comes. And if a parent doesn't come, or they don't want to share that information with you, we have to maintain custody of that child. We have, I have asked Nathan White, Assistant Chief White, to look into the possibilities of looking into this and what it would cost. But right now, that is really the inhibitor right now for us to fully go full-on to that. The other big thing I think is important for us to understand, because I had a conversation, we were out, I want to say at South Patrol, we were having this conversation with a community group. Where were we, Nathan? Where we had this?
South Patrol.
Was it South? Is, when that was in full swing, we were in a different time and place in the world. And I mean, I don't, and I'm not talking COVID now. I'm talking just from a social place, you know, parent, both parents are out right now working. Kids are using technology to say, hey, let's do a, you know, let's do a mass rave or showing up. I can't remember what they call it right now. But, you know, they'll say, hey, let's 100 of us go down here and have a party in the middle of the street and shut it down. So the technology is a little more difficult for us to control that piece of it. There's a lot going on that we have to take into consideration before we say, okay, we're going to start picking up every kid that's out past this time at night that we have to deal with. So it's not off the table, but there's a lot of things, a lot of boxes we're going to have to check before we can initiate that fully.
Well, you mentioned parents, and there's a lot of parental responsibility for these kids. And the only way you can get their attention is to get a call that your, your child is out, whether they're doing anything or not, they're just out. What are the hours under our current ordinance?
Oh, I will need some help there. Eleven to six? Eleven to six, sir. Eleven to six and midnight on the weekends.
And there is an exception for, let's say, somebody who works?
Something like that. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, get that. Right. So, you know, we're, we've been talking about this problem in connection with mental health, with every aspect of what's going on in our society. And schools, it takes everybody. But I, I really think we have got to work on this particular ordinance. And if it requires a place, then we need to figure that out.
And I'll tell you, when I look at our crime involving our young kids, I think it's important for our council and our, and our, and our community to understand, this is not a problem that the police are going to be able to solve by themselves.
Absolutely.
It's absolutely not. We, as much as I would love to be the parents of a bunch of these kids, I cannot, you know, I, and my officers cannot. We will do our best to be part of the solution. But we are going to need the help of the churches. We're going to need the help of the neighborhoods. We're going to need the, like I said, I'm looking at the block that I grew up on, and we were having this conversation at lunch. I can tell you that Ms. Miller was here, Ms. Wilson was here, Ms. Kazan was here, Ms. Buford was here, and we all played out in the street. And they were the community watch group. And when I got out of line, anyone else got out of line, they snatched me back in. We somehow have to go back to that. But to think for one second that police officers are going to be able to figure this out by themselves or solve this by themselves, we're not going to be able to do it. Like I said, we are part of the solution, but we are just part of it. And we are willing participants to be part of it, but we cannot do it by ourselves.
And I don't think any of us expect you all to be the solution, because it includes us sitting here, and includes parents, and includes the schools, and the churches, and the other groups. But I think we need to start, and maybe a place to start, because I will tell you, there are parents whose kids are out on the street in violation of curfew, they don't even know they're gone.
Yeah.
So I, I'm willing to work with, with any groups to see if we can.
We'll take that up.
Because if we don't stop it now, then we get them on the other side.
Absolutely.
Of the criminal process.
I agree with you.
Thanks.
Mr. Christian?
Yep. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I left out something in the earlier questions. But I think it's even more pertinent after Ms. Joy's comments as far as societal changes. Chief, I want to give you three, three things to respond to and how they relate to gangs. Stolen guns, drugs, and social media. How do those interact with those, with the gang activity that we have in our city and probably in other cities, too?
Well, they're all connected. I mean, you have individuals that go out and lift handles to try to come up with, to try to get, they're finding, they're looking for guns, you know, they'll look rifle through your car, you leave it unlocked, and steal a gun, and they'll sell it either to a drug dealer or a gang member to get money. And you'll have a lot of our homeless folks that'll do that, because they know that, hey, if I got a gun, I can get a couple hundred dollars for this gun to one of the guys in the neighborhood that's doing dirt. So you have that. From a social media standpoint, just like I spoke to earlier, these kids are very savvy. And, you know, I was reading, I'm trying to think of where I was reading this, either probably in the Post or something, talking about setting up technology hubs. Some of these kids are very smart, very technology savvy. And they're talking about setting up these hubs to help them, these incubators, to help them develop their expertise in a constructive manner. And you set up these incubators for them to set up their companies, and they, and they learn how to do all the graphic artist stuff and all the programming, and they do these things. Again, these are things that, there's no need to reinvent the wheel. There's options out there, but we're going to need help from our technology experts and our business community to help us provide opportunities for these kids that don't have the financial means to do some of these things, but they have the intelligence and the ingenuity to come up with the perfect idea, but they don't have anyone to finance them. So I think that would help as well. Drugs are part of it. Like I said, they use, they sell, steal the guns to sell, to buy drugs. It's cyclical. It's all cyclical.
Chief, it seems to me, we talked, you and I talked a little bit about this earlier today, but it's hard for me to believe that we only took 142 guns off the street last year.
We took more than that.
Oh, that's, that's just, that's what you talked about on the, that's the stats. There were more than that?
Those were just those, those were just those units. Those were just those.
There were 800 stolen. These two units came up. So what did we, how many did we take off the street?
I don't know if I have that number total. I can get that for you. I don't have that number total with me.
Whatever it may be.
Like I say, you know, if our officers do a car check, pay check, they stop someone, they do a search warrant, and they recover a gun, that's part of our recovery, that's part of our recovery, stealing guns.
Sure.
We run into a lot of guns on the streets. And, you know, if it's, if it's legally carried, you know, there's nothing we can do about it. But if we find it in a criminal situation, we'll run the serial number, see if it's stolen. A lot of people who have guns don't have their, their serial numbers written down, so they're sitting in our property and evidence room. I tell anybody, the minute you get a gun, take your phone, take a picture of the serial number, take a picture of the brand and everything else, and it's in your phone. You have that. You know, you don't even have to go the old way of writing it down on the list. You know, you don't even have to go the old way of writing it down on the list, and, and just take a picture of it, because you're always gonna have your phone, and if you don't, it's always saved up into the, into the cloud. But that's a big, big problem we have, is people don't have the data when they say, yeah, my gun got stolen, but I don't have any information on it.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, I think the source of so much of the bad that's going on is in these, is these guns. And it's often by, you know, raising to what are now mid twenties, you know, I watched how they cognitively, cognitively developed. And fourteen year olds aren't ready to make decisions related to what, what to do and what not to do with a gun.
Right.
And, and I, I just think that, and I know what the Constitution says, and there's been a lot of, you know, we, we get to watch New York from a distance, and we, we watched it get, we watched it get cleaned up. And those of us that visited New York pre Gi, pre Giuliani and post Giuliani, we had to just, you know, I wouldn't, I would never have gone back, you know, until they cleaned it up. And it started to go the other direction, and we can argue about stop and frisk and what, you know, constant, the constitutionality of it. However, I, I would like to see a plan for us to take more guns off the street. I mean, I think this council will be willing to help find a way to fund that. And, and I just, I believe that we, we, uh, that's one way we get the community to help us. You know, we're talking about it takes all of us, I think they, I think, you know, that the phone calls to say, so and so's got a gun.
Well, I think, and, and, I think there's, there's, there's two, you know, parallel tracks to what you're saying. You know, and, and we, we kind of talked about this at lunch. I have gone to coffee with the mayor, I have gone to public community forums and had people approach me and say, hey, you know, what are we gonna do about people stealing guns out of our cars? I've had two guns stolen out of my cars. I can tell you, I have three people here in Lubbock that I have socialized with, and all three of them had a gun stolen from them in the last eighteen months. And all of them, their cars were unlocked. So how about we start with our, with our community taking their guns out of their cars?
Yeah, locking them, locking is one thing, but taking them out is even better.
Take it out of your cars. Uh, I mean, let, let, let's start there. Uh, and, and when I attend these meetings and people saying, you know, hey, what are you guys gonna do about people stealing guns out of my cars? Well, first of all, take your gun out of your car. How about we start right there? Uh, because I think that is important for our community to understand, we're not that sleepy town anymore. And what is, you know, people say, well, I have a gun to protect me, and, and I have no problem with that, but that gun is doing you no good in an unlocked car while you're in a house asleep. Take your gun out of your car.
Or even in a locked car so they can see it.
Yeah, so the other parallel track is that, i- is us doing our part. And again, I think with the program or the, the plan that Assistant Chief Barron has in place, with the increase in self-initiated activity, we are doing what we need to be doing to get these guns off the street, but we need our public's help with that. Now, we're all for adding, you know, task force and this, that, and the other, but that takes people, and that's what we're trying to get to right now. But I, I think we can work both ways, but we need the, the community's help on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, going back to the crime statistics earlier in the presentation, is there, I know this may not be calculated, is there a percentage or a perceived percentage of the amount of crime that is really committed from a desire for drugs?
I think it'd be hard for us to calculate that, that's not, that's not a question we ask, did you commit this crime because you wanted to go buy drugs? That's not something that we would capture.
The amount of, well, and I understand some of it's for cash, but is it, um, I just feel like it seems, I, I've seen this in previous years where there was talked about.
Some of crime, some of crime are opportunities, you have to understand, there is an element out there, it's a small element, that, that their whole existence is crime and crime base. You know, burglarizing folks to sell their stuff, whether it be on one of the social media sites, eBay or any of the other ones. But there, there are folks out there that are, you know, their whole existence, like, just like you get up to go to an eight hour day job, they get up to go, okay, who am I gonna burglarize today so I can get what I need to survive? So, but we don't capture, was this crime committed due to my drug addiction or something like that?
Or, or drug theft or-
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
All right, Mr. Mayor, but you just prompted some of the thoughts when you were talking about guns and vehicles and that sort of thing, is it? I actually looked into the idea of, could you, could we develop fines of some sorts for people that have left their guns in their vehicles and then they report them stolen? That, to me, that's a crime, and that, they are, they're initiating crimes by doing that. Can't do it on the local level. So that's just, wanted to let you know, that would have to come from the state, that if something like that could ever be initiated, it would be on the state level, but it certainly is an interesting thought.
Mr. Griffith?
One, one more, I'm, I'm sorry, I should ask, a while ago, we've had Crime Line in existence for decades, since the seventies. Is that a tool, um, I don't know how, how successful that still is, and I hope it is.
It's very successful, and actually, the president of Crime Line is here, is here tonight, actually. Uh, I don't know if he's going to speak during public comments or not, but he is here, and it is something that we use. Crime Line, we, we met back in November, I think, at the South Patrol Division, we had a meeting with the board of Crime Line, and, and we talked about, um, they are going through some transitions, uh, they, they've elected a new president, and they, they have a lot of things going on. But they have been extremely helpful to us in, in identifying suspects, getting tips, and paying out tips for everyone. I know one of the things that Assistant Chief Barron and his homicide guys do is, they use them a lot. Uh, one of the things that we talked about in that meeting is, is possibly using them for things beside Part One crimes, using them for, for some other crimes. Because we have prolific burglars here that, that cause us a lot of issues, uh, and, and maybe using that to, when we have those burglars or, or some, using for robberies and some other things. So they have been very useful to us, and, and I know, uh, we talked about being more, doing more of a media push to get that information out there so people know that Crime Line still exists, uh, and, and they are, they're here to accept your, your tips.
Sounds like a great tool.
It is a great tool.
And that may be, uh, conceptually, maybe a thought when it comes to guns.
Thank you. Mr. Christian?
I, I want to say, I did invite Mr. Johnson to here, I thought, I didn't realize this was not gonna be an action item, and, but I'm glad he's in the audience and is hearing this information. And we had a good conversation yesterday morning and got an update on where Crime Line is today and where they want to go. And we, most of us that have lived here for a long time are very aware of Crime Line, but I do believe we need to up the visibility. And I think there's a lot of good things that we could come out, that could come out of that partnership and, and even make that partnership even stronger between Crime Line and, and LPD. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Chief, please continue.
Okay, um, want to go over a few traffic statistics for everyone to kind of wrap their head around. Texas recorded, the state of Texas, recorded over four thousand crashes in 2021, resulting in over forty-four hundred people losing their lives. Lubbock recorded forty-four crashes in 2021, resulting in forty-seven deaths. Eleven of these Lubbock crashes resulted in criminal charges of manslaughter or negligent homicide of the suspect, of the suspect vehicle, the suspect operating the vehicle. In eight instances, the driver of the suspect vehicle was intoxicated, as I spoke about earlier. In three of those instances, the suspect driver was grossly expeding the speed limit. Six times out of the eleven, the passenger of the suspect vehicle, the striking vehicle, was killed, six times out of eleven. Three pedestrians were struck, the other two deaths were the driver and a passenger of the other vehicle struck by a drunk driver. We need our community to slow down, we need everyone to stop drinking and driving. We're going to call on our restaurants and bar establishments to help us by shutting people off when they know they had too much. We're gonna ask them, from a media push standpoint, to help these folks get safe ride home. There is no reason in the world why forty-seven people should have lost their lives on Lubbock roads last year in fatality accidents. Texas does not lead the nation, California leads the nation, but we're, we're running second to them. When you look at this slide up on the board, you see that we had, Lubbock experienced eight thousand four hundred and eight crashes. Fifty-seven hundred of those were accidents without injuries, twenty-six hundred of those were accidents with injuries. We had a total of thirty-nine, uh, three thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight total injuries. Again, forty-seven of those were fatalities. Twenty-four of our fatality, uh, crashes occurred on highways, resulting in twenty-six deaths. And twenty of those crashes occurred on our city streets, resulting in twenty-one deaths. So from a traffic enforcement standpoint, trying to address this issue, you can see that last year, uh, we conducted over thirty-five thousand traffic stops. We issued just over twenty-one thousand citations with over, with just under thirty thousand charges. We also issued eighteen thousand plus, um, warnings last year. We arrested five hundred and seventeen people for driving, driving while intoxicated, that's up from three hundred and fifty-five. We had a number of initiatives kick off last year, thanks to Casey Davis and Eric Quijada, Lieutenant Quijada of our traffic unit. We, we, we had work zone awareness, two move over, slow down traffic enforcement operations with LSO and DPS. And I, I had, I had breakfast this morning with Kelly Rowe and Joe Longway. We try to get together every couple of months and talk about what's going on. You know, with the situation that we are seeing down at our border, every DPS region is sending troopers down there. Joe will tell you that a lot of his troopers are down there, they're down there, they were down there, uh, well, they're down there fourteen days at a time. And he'll tell you that the wives and the husbands aren't happy, because those guys are gone, and every, the guys and gals are gone, and everything breaks when they're down there at the border. He doesn't have the number of troopers patrolling our streets like that he normally has. You know, Kelly Rowe was telling me that, you know, he's thinking about initiating a traffic, an accident investigations unit, because the accidents the DPS would handle, his guys are having to handle, and he needs some expertise in that, because the, the troopers are down at the border. That plays a part into it. You know, the, the, the one more, one more May initiative that was, you know, that's, um, you know, take one more second before you intersection, take one more minute to get to where you're supposed to be, leave the house one more minute earlier. These are just some of the initiatives that were either picked up by our TV, our radio, and our social media campaign that was put on by our public information office and working with that. We initiated the driver, the aggressive driver program, where we had officers driving around in, in regular cars with patrol officers stationed out through the highways to try to identify aggressive drivers and ticket them. We participated in a no refusal weekend over Labor Day. We had officers go out to Shadow Dreams participation in Estacado, talking to our young drivers, letting them know what's going on and, and how, how dangerous operating a motor vehicle can be. We started up the nighttime traffic squad in September to, to help address some of the issues that we're finding with our nighttime drivers. We are aggressively trying to slow down people in Lubbock. We are aggressively trying to change their driving behavior. We need the community's help, uh, we need our bar, our, our, our bar and restaurant owners' help to, to get their, we're not telling, saying, call us, we're saying, call them a cab, call them an Uber. It's an app on your phone. There's no reason we should have lost forty-seven people in the city of Lubbock, um, last year. We are continuing to do aggressive enforcement to try to change this behavior. I'll stop and see if there's any questions, Mayor.
Chief, how does that thirty, just under thirty-six thousand total traffic stops compare to 2019, 2020, as you said earlier, is not a good comparison?
Oh, yeah. Allison, do we happen to have that number? Yeah, yeah, I, I, it would probably trend closer to 2019.
Somebody that was being critical of this would say, we pulled nineteen stats and we want to show it looks better, but, you know, we, that's what we should, when you've already said, we're not, we didn't do it.
Yeah, yeah, when you're looking at, like I said, yeah, when you look at these numbers, I, I think it's important, that, that important caveat here, you don't normally see a forty percent increase.
I understand, that's my, that's why I'm asking the question.
Right, yeah, and I understand that, and, and we can, we can pull that for you. Can, can you pull up last year's annual report? Does anyone have their laptop with them? Uh, because it might be in there. I'm sure it's trending closer to that. But, uh, but like, like I said, we are, we are, through our initiatives, trying to change the culture and the behavior of our drivers around here. And, and, and we can't blame it on our young drivers, it's not just our young drivers.
I understand. And it's fair, and it, and I think I heard you say that twelve, one in four were pedestrians.
Yeah, 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 there's three of them were pedestrians.
One in four weren't even in a car.
No, they weren't even in a car, and it was excessive speed. All right, I'm going to, there's no other questions, I'll move to our staffing, academy, and recruiting. Our department organizational structure has not changed since the last time we've been here. Again, some of the people have changed seats simply because of promotions and retirements, uh, but our, the organizational structure had remained, has remained the same. Staffing considerations, uh, we are authorized four hundred and forty-five authorized positions, this changed la, with, in, in October, uh, with the budget. Uh, we went from four sixty-five to four forty-five, that was because of the civilianization piece, and the next slide, we'll get into that just a little bit. We have thirty-three, uh, cadets in our training academy, we have four over hires. Uh, this is the first time that we have had over hires in a long time. And, and that goes to our recruiting that, that, that we'll, we'll speak about here in just a little bit. Uh, we have six officers that are in field training, that'll get off of that soon. Uh, the department leave status, we've got a couple of guys that are in the, uh, guard, uh, and I think, I think they're down at the border too, is that correct? Yeah, you know, we got a couple, we've got a couple of guys down at the border because they're National Guard. Uh, we've got a couple of people on, on different type of leave status. Uh, when you look at the retirement eligible, uh, that sixty-three is about fourteen percent of our department, could say, you know what, I've had enough, I'm done. Uh, so that's something that we're keeping an eye on. Uh, we have a hundred and twenty-eight authorized civilian positions, and we are working hard to fill those positions. When you talk about our staffing considerations, one of the things we did in this budget year is we civilianized fifteen positions. And what we were trying to, to, to do by civilianizing those positions were take people out of administrative intensive positions and move them to patrol. You can see that from 2020, we went from nine percent law enforcement and administration to six percent today in administration. And you look at patrol, you see it's at sixty-five percent, uh, in patrol in 2020, and now it's sixty-nine percent. Investigations just moved down slightly, and that's because we changed those six forensic investigators from law enforcement to civilian. We held two academy classes in 2021, and we graduated twenty-six cadets from those things. Uh, again, you look at our social media pages, you know, our recruiting efforts, our interviews, speaking engagements, meet the recruiters, televised. We also traveled across the state of Texas to try to identify and recruit, uh, folks. And, and that's part of what helped us get to where we are right now. When you look at this next slide for our first class of 2022, we had three hundred and thirty-three people sign up for the written test, a hundred and forty-two took the written test. We talked about the hundred and forty-two showing up to take the test Friday at the community engagement task force meeting. Uh, there was a plethora, there were a number, a plethora of reasons why people didn't show up, whether they got sick, COVID, uh, some, um, changed their mind, some forgot, some had to work that day, there were a whole bunch of reasons. But we did have our recruiters go back and, and, and ask, especially the minority and female candidates, why didn't you show up for the test? And we, and, uh, Assistant Chief Caspell has a whole list that the academy has of, this is who we contacted, this is what they said, and it's nothing that we are doing. And that, and they indicated that there's nothing we're doing. There was one cadet that thought we should have paid for their bus ticket to get here to take the test, uh, and provided them a laptop computer, and they wanted a, a bunch of stuff. And it just, it was kind of off, but it was a bunch of stuff that, you know, we could not do. So you had a hundred and seven pass the written test, eighty-six passed the physical fitness test, forty-two passed the background phase. You can see we lost quite a bit in the background phase. Uh, we had a number of automatic disqualifiers for criminal activity, for use of, uh, illegal substances, a, a lot of things, took a lot of folks out of that. Thirty-five passed the board and forty, uh, and, and sorry, and thirty-four were hired on, on January thirty-first. The, the, one person pulled out, did not accept the job offer, and we currently have thirty-three in academy, we had one of the cadets quit the first day. So that's where we are. I say that to say this, um, this council worked really- This council, uh, worked, uh, really hard with us in October to address one of the issues that we believe were, was affecting our ability to recruit, and that is our entry level pay. I think this, the, the statistic that, that's on your screen right now could show you that our ability to affect the entry level pay, uh, has, uh, bared us fruit. Uh, we, we, uh, the city manager allowed me to, uh, over hire seven, but we didn't need all those spots because they didn't make it past the interview phase. But we end up over hiring five, and we lost the one on the first day. You know, the goals that we wanted to try to address, uh, with our pay for law enforcement was, you know, uh, really attacking the entry level pay. That was our number one goal. We did that. We are one of the highest, if not the highest, entry level law enforcement officers, law enforcement agencies, uh, in West Texas. Um, the, the, the second goal was try to, was, was, uh, uh, it was, um, recruitment retention. We are looking at, uh, our, uh, our competitive agencies right now to see where we are in regards to the top. Uh, and the third goal is to lead West Texas. So we are looking, we have gathered that information, we have analyzed it, we kind of have an idea of where we are, and we're going to continue to look at what we need to do to be the leader in West Texas. With that, I will stop and see if there are any questions over academy and recruiting.
Mr. Christian?
I'm just curious, uh, any of these recruits coming from other agencies already? Are we, we seeing some?
We had one from Border Patrol. We had, do you know where, where they all came from? The recruits?
Uh, we had...
I know we had one from Border Patrol. Tex, we got a lot from the Texas prisons. I thought we had one from a, we had one or two from other agencies, but they were small agencies. And they, he may have quit, he may have been the one that, 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 one came from some sheriff's office, but he decided not to take the offer. So we are seeing some, but, uh, not the numbers that we thought we'd see, especially with, uh, the, the lateral hiring bonus. We, uh, that's one of the things that we talked about, that, that we, we've talked about is, uh, kind of disappointed in, uh, what we thought we would see with the lateral hiring, uh, program.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, and, and you may not have it with you here, and it may be on your, um, your site with the, the demographic break, breakdown on, uh, the numbers that you have here with recruits.
With this class?
Yes, and but not, you do? Okay, not, but not only that, but also with regard to traffic stops and all of that. And you may have that more detailed on your site or whatever, but I, I'd really like to make that available to folks.
Yes, ma'am, our, well, our, our traffic stop data report that we have to file every year per Texas law, we will have that ready, uh, probably by bid next week.
Okay, cool.
If the city manager wants to put that on a, a, a work session item, we can go over that. But we will have that data available and made public here shortly.
But if you have the recruit data...
I do.
The breakdown, I'd like to hear that.
So for this class, one of the things that was brought to my attention, that this is the first class, um, in which, uh, a, a white male or Caucasian male is the minority, uh, within this class of thirty-three. Um, there are fourteen white males, there are sixteen Hispanic males, one black male, one Asian male, and one Hispanic female. All right.
Please continue, chief.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have one more, one more question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And I know that you, because it came out of the, uh, the community task force, where the question was, well, what was happening? What was causing these folks not to show up? Do you have a little bit more, uh, information about some of the other reasons? I know there's one, uh, individual who wanted a, a limousine ride to Lubbock, but, I mean, what about the other individuals? What were some of the things, some of the other things that caused them to do this?
John, I may need you to help me here, but, uh, it, it, it stemmed from every, a, a lot of it was, they either forgot, and they thought that we should have sent them a reminder that, hey, the test is occurring. Uh, they either had to work, uh, they got sick with COVID, uh, one of them was pregnant.
Both of it was travel related, it was just a few names?
Yeah, a lot of it was travel related. But there were, like I said, uh, it's, we had a whole list, there were, there were a whole plethora of, of, of reasons, reasons.
Yeah, because I know he wanted to kind of, uh, make sure that we followed up with them, and it's just curious to know as to what it turned out to be the, be the issues. Thank you.
And a lot of them indicated, because one of the questions that the recruiters asked him, was it anything that we did? And I think that's where we got the feedback that, what, you should've sent me a reminder, you know, that, to come up and take the test that you signed up for, so.
Ms. Joy?
In your meeting with Sheriff Rowe and with, um, Longway?
Joe Longway.
Um, did you all talk about the fact that having DPS officers who are state, uh, employees sent to the border, what effect that's having on the cities? I'm not worried about counties particularly at this point, but about, on the cities in terms of, for example, you, you just talked about the DWI arrests. Uh, because we don't have those people helping us with that. Was, has that ever been communicated to any of our state elected officials?
We didn't directly talk about it, but I, 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 I think it's implied because, you know, um, they know that I'm giving my presentation today, and, you know, we have these conversations, and, 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 uh, it's, it's a situation that, that, that Commander Longway really doesn't have a say in it. Uh, it's, hey, you have to send this many, this, this percent of your force down here, uh, for operation, I can't think of the name of the operation right now, um, but, uh, to protect, yeah, Lone Star, Operation Lone Star. Uh, so, um, he understands that, and he has a force here, but it's not his entire force. It's, 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 it's a percentage of his force right now.
I'm certainly not placing any fault or blame on any of you. I'm just saying that somebody needs to tell the people who represent us at the state level that this border issue, which is significant, I get that, but it has these indirect effects...
Yes.
Where people are killed because we've got our drunk drivers out there. So sometimes we talk to each other about these things, but it, it doesn't go any further.
Right.
So I'd like to see it go further.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure Commander Longway doesn't want to put his job on the line, but, um...
Well, I, 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 again, I, I think it's one of those things to where everyone knows that that's causing other issues. Uh, it's, is, how do we, how do we move forward?
Well, you just go to some stats.
Oh, yeah, these stats are public. They, they have that, and again, I'm sure I'm not the only one that's, uh, you know, Lubbock being as big as it is, we are not seeing the impact that some of these smaller communities have to where they are truly relying on that DPS trooper to police that area. So, uh, believe me, I understand it, but I also understand that some of these very rural communities, they are feeling the impact ten times harder than we are.
Okay, please continue, chief.
So we talked about our, our capital improvement projects, uh, just, just real quickly. Uh, as you all know, August ninth, we, we cut the ribbon on our First Patrol Division station, uh, followed in October, on October twelfth, by opening up South Patrol Division and, uh, North Patrol Division on November first. Uh, Headquarters is expected to be complete, and, and us having, uh, you know, occupation of that sometime during the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. You all know that that's a twenty-one point six million dollar project. Our property and evidence and crime lab, again, there is an, an item on the agenda today, uh, with Park Hill for architectural and engineering work to get that thing done. And I've already talked about our IT, um, CAT RMS project. It's, it's really ITs, but it's for police and fire. So I will stop and see if there's any questions in regards to our capital improvement projects. The next few slides are just, uh, it's, it's just a small sampling of some of the things that, uh, we were involved in, uh, this past year. Uh, I, I'm not going to read over any, uh, all of them, but I do want to pull a few things out. You know, January was, uh, you know, talking about our traffic enforcement. You know, we did a multi-agency traffic PSA initiative. Uh, you know, our, our, our cadets, you know, try, teaching them to be part of the community and to volunteer their time. We had our recruits go out on MLK cleanup, uh, our academy recruits go out there for that. You know, February, again, traffic PSA initiatives. We did a multi-day ELC activation for the winter storm that, you know, when, when ERCOT had their issues. So, uh, and we had, we experienced that winter weather here. Um, in March, we promoted, we promoted a lot of people this year, a lot of changes over at PD. So we, we promoted ten folks in March. April, uh, we, again, that was the shattered dreams, um, deal there. You get into May, we, uh, you know, we celebrated our one-hundredth anniversary, and we presented a proclamation by this, um, uh, council. We did the One More May Initiative. Uh, we had an anti-Asian hate crimes forum with TTU. We, we partnered with them, and that was important. That was after that, uh, that horrific incident that occurred in Atlanta. Um, June, we, we had our first burgers and badges, uh, more than seven hundred attendees. Uh, that was a great event, uh, with, uh, our EMS, fire, and, and local law enforcement's within this region. That was fun. We, we did the groundbreaking on Headquarters. We had the Ironman, we did the Juneteenth. You know, July, our region, um, unfortunately, you know, suffered a, another devastating blow to the law enforcement community with the loss of Josh Bartlett and the, uh, SWAT standoff in Loveland. Uh, that, that was, that very difficult for the sheriff's office and, and the law enforcement, uh, officers in this region. You know, we launched our co-responder, uh, program. This is where, uh, CIT officers are partnered with a health, a mental health, uh, professional, and they go out on those calls together. Um, August, we, uh, actually, we did the ribbon cutting. Uh, one of the things I want to highlight in August, and I know this is a personal achievement, but I think it's important. Assistant Chief John Caspell graduated from the Police Executive Researchers Forum's Senior Management Institute, and this is held out of Boston College. Uh, and, and this goes to just making sure that we are elevating our people and the next leaders, uh, of this police department. This is a shorter stint school, but it's on the same level, level as, uh, SPIs, uh, uh, out of Louisville and the FBI. And, and so I, I would love to get the opportunity to send all of our command staff to this to get them ready. Uh, it, it's a great, uh, one is a great school, I've attended it. But it's also important for them to build their resume, uh, and, and be ready to take on those command positions. So, uh, I'm really proud of him for that. Um, September, you know, we, again, aggressive driver program launched. We, we did launch the nighttime traffic squad. Uh, October, we did the five-five rally, uh, you know, for Eric, Nick, and, and Matt. Uh, that's, again, constantly hitting the traffic and, and move over and slow down. Uh, South Patrol Division ribbon cutting, uh, National Police Week in Washington DC. I and our, um, uh, several members of our, uh, honor guard traveled to DC, uh, because, because of COVID. We couldn't do it, uh, last, in twenty twenty, so, uh, we, um, celebrated Nick, uh, last year. We had the Mayor's Marathon in, in October. Um, December, North Patrol Division ribbon cutting. Uh, our SWAT team traveled to, uh, Florida for the annual SWAT, uh, the international annual SWAT roundup, ended up taking the top national team. Uh, that's how great these guys are. They went down there and kicked tail and took names, came back with the, the top national team. So very proud of them for that. December, again, giving back to our community, Santa Cops, uh, and South Plains Food Bank. Again, the recruit class went out there and, and volunteered that. Lastly, I'd, I'd like to end with, uh, really taking a second to thank, um, my command staff and all the law enforcement and civilian members of Lubbock Police Department for allowing me to be their police chief. We have a lot going on. We have a lot of built-in change, uh, a lot of decisions, a lot of tough decisions have to be made. Uh, they have weathered the storm with us over these last two years. It's been a difficult year, um, but, uh, I, I appreciate them, and I appreciate the police officers. I appreciate this council and, uh, this community for, uh, wanting to allow, again, allowing me to be the police chief of Lubbock. It's, it's, it, it's been a great challenge for me, uh, we have enjoyed it. Uh, my entire family is here now, so we, we, we made it our home, uh, so, uh, really enjoying it. And with that, I will be quiet and ask you if you have any ending or final questions.
Okay, council questions or comments? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you, chief, for, uh, presenting this information and, and the gang back there that I kind of pester sometimes, but I appreciate, uh, what you guys do. Thank you for sharing, and I hope people paid attention to see all the move, there are lots of moving parts.
Lots of moving parts.
Lots of moving parts through, uh, within this organization, and even the work that you guys take on with other agencies that has made the difference. I mean, you can, can, uh, tell by the numbers that you present. So I thank you for the, uh, the work that gets done day in, day out, when we don't even see it happening. So I just wanted to say that, since I've pestered you guys so much.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris, other comments? Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I would echo what Ms. Patterson-Harris said. I really appreciate you guys. I can't imagine what, what y'all's day is like, especially it's a, if it's a particularly tough day. And every day's a tough day for you guys because you don't know what's coming around the corner. Uh, we have a great police department, we really do. Uh, great individuals, and, uh, I just want to, once again, thank you for you guys' work. But I would also challenge our citizens that are listening or who are not listening. They could have easy access to this report. And sometimes we talk about responsibilities of, of the council, of y'all's department to get information out, to let people know what the s- state of the union is, so to speak, with crime and, and, and challenges in our city. It's a two-way street. Uh, I, I challenge our citizens to, to look at this and understand it and really absorb it and, uh, have a better understanding of where we are and what, what y'all are, guys are up against. And like everybody on this side said, uh, you guys can't do it alone. Our committed, our community has to step up. Our community has to be more involved in, in a variety of ways, whether it's, you know, with Crime Line or others. It's time for us to join the fight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian, Mr. Messingill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for what you do, thanks to everyone at the police department. It's my honor to work with you on this council, and, you know, it's the reason we get up in the morning. It's public safety, all of us, we know it's, it's our priority, and, uh, I'm grateful for that. Um, one question, it's been expressed to me by several people that sometimes the department spends an inordinate amount of time on homeless issues. Could you make a couple of quick comments on that?
Well, um, I would, I would challenge that. Um, we, we, I, I think the, 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 the time and point count right now is right around two hundred or just over two hundred, right around that two hundred number. Uh, we have Sergeant Bergen and two officers assigned to our homeless outreach team. Um, yes, our patrol officers get called to that, but, uh, they... No matter how you look at it, they are citizens of Lubbock, whether they have a home that they can't go to or they don't have a home. So, uh, when they call nine-one-one or when there's an issue involving them, we have to give them the same treatment that we would give you, uh, or the mayor or anyone else. And, and that's, that's what, that, that's the culture change that you see sitting behind me, making sure that we are treating the person that is dumping our trash the same way we would treat the person in the corner office. That's the culture change, and, uh, I, I, I would disagree with that. There, there's the issues, I, I know this council is looking at different, um, ways to try to, uh, address the homeless problem, uh, but a call for service to us is a call for service.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Messingill. Chief, I, I echo the comments about you, your leadership and your team, as you're men and women. Thank you for what you do every day, we can't even imagine what you do. I do think, uh, as we push this data out, that it might be helpful for us to look back over several years. I looked at last year's report, it showed four years worth of data. I think it gives us a better representation. What I think we're going to see is that some of our efforts to decentralize our, our team are starting to show some results.
Yes, sir.
And I think we'd like to see that. I, I think we all agree that twenty's a sort of an anomaly, and...
It's an asterisk year.
From a data standpoint, uh, but I think that would be helpful, better, in, better telling our story. Uh, but, you know, that's, that's all I've, I've got to add, and I'm thankful for, for what you guys do.
Thank you, sir.
Council, anything else? Ms. Joy?
Just to remind her that our Lubbock Fire also assists you guys, and...
They do.
We didn't talk about them because this is your show today, but...
I would love to see Chief Ferguson up here to give a, a presentation.
I'm not going to require that.
He's going to have, he's going to have an opportunity. We talked, the city manager and I talked about that this morning. We, you know, we want to make sure that, that Chief Ferguson gets the same opportunity, so, yes.
Share the love, brother.
Yeah, yeah.
But we don't want to forget them in this conversation that we're having with public safety.
You know, one of the, I, I didn't mention him by name, but, uh, Cody Nelson is, uh, one of his equipment operators is assigned to our tag, and, and he helps us out a lot, and, and very appreciative to, to Sean and all of his guys over there.
Okay, uh, thank you, chief. Counsel, I'll point you now to item two-three. This is a, a... This is a continuing discussion regarding allocation and investment of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And I'll turn this, the discussion over to the city manager, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. And just so I do not forget, and we'll make the public announcements tomorrow, but we've now opened a transparency page, an additional transparency page on the city website that will contain the following day, all of your council presentations that will be out there. In fact, the test screens were up late last week and we all looked at them, so we'll have those. And I know we have several folks sit in the audience and are trying to get notes and it's moving too fast. First off, you're always welcome to contact us. We'll email those presentations, but we think the page will make that even easier where you can pull down whichever ones you choose to do so. So jumping back into the ARPA discussion, I'm going to go straight to our ledger. There have been some slight changes to it. As I walk through this, I'm going to ask Mr. Howerton and Mr. Rahano to get ready. They've got each a short piece that they're going to play today. Up at the top, you see the housing projects and a hashtag, what we used to call the pound sign, the hashtag. That indicates, counsel, that those funds.
Look at you go, Mr. Atkinson.
All right, now I can't get back going again. That indicates, the hashtag shall indicate that those projects, council has set up the appropriation or will finish setting up that appropriation tonight. In just a moment, we're going to let Mr. Howerton tell you the status of those two projects. Cyber, same thing. That appropriation's in progress. Counsel, you'll have a closed session briefing on some of those items. Diversion Center, that's the joint project with the county and with Star Care, same thing. Counsel, small business, arts, nonprofits, those have not changed from your prior discussion. Would note, and I'm just carrying forward a note on behalf of Councilmember Chitas, he did want to have a discussion prior to appropriation that maybe the nonprofit number might need to be greater than what we show on the screen. Job training at three and a half, this is what Eric will speak to in a moment. Counsel, the asterisk, I'd like to move that to appropriation at your next council meeting to go ahead and set those dollars up. That would be your first read. Your action would follow the second time. Broadband project as well. So we are still in line with the joint project through the T E A and the Governor's Broadband Development Office. We expect that to come forward and we just want to be ready to do that. There are still numerous, numerous grant opportunities and state programs related to broadband. I think this other project we're in might be moving a little faster. Homelessness at 3.5, no change there. Public safety improvements, that's now up to 3.85 million. Let me note what some of those changes are on the big picture level. We've put in an allocation of approximately $600,000 from the police department. That consists of really the items that Chief Mitchell mentioned the last time, the modular barriers, those are protecting, whether they be parade routes or demonstrations or just any event that we need to provide vehicular protection, protection from vehicles. It includes at the moment, two additional of the security towers. We'll have a Steve, a Patterson Harris.
I think we have one, a Steve and a Sheila and a Jeff now.
So moved, Mayor. Large number of upgraded traffic radar units. These are the car units and four additional speed trailers. That's in addition to the one that we talked about. Counsel, continuing through on that, please note that we've added a contingency in there. The early quotes for items like our burn house are not coming back where they were to start with. I'm sure that's not a surprise. So we've upped that budget and put a little money to cover that. So that's the quick summary. I'm going to ask Mr. Howerton to come up and give us a quick catch-up on the housing projects and what we might see coming forward on that. So.
While Mr. Howerton comes up, Mr. Atkinson, the public safety improvements, let's post a quick work session or even in ARPA.
We can do it in ARPA next.
Yeah, but let's just get the detail of that before we consider it, okay? Because I know there, you mentioned police today, but there are some Lubbock Fire and Rescue projects. You mentioned the burn house, but let's, let's just look, make sure we look at that, okay?
We will. Again, that's one I'd like to go ahead and post the budget amendment, but we'll do the work session prior.
That's perfectly fine. Cyber, I think we'll cover that in executive session today. We don't need to do that. Then we loop back after we hear from Mr. Howerton and Mr. Rahano, we can loop back and talk about some of these zones. Mr. Howard.
Good afternoon, Mayor and the City Council. As Mr. Atkinson mentioned, we do have two housing projects that we're currently working on to get back in front of you. 2.5 million. Each development is going to receive 1.25 million. Both of these are located in the northeast quadrant of the city, just inside the Loop. She likes that, I know she does. Total, you've got one project that will give us 60 single-family residences. The next one will give us 33.
The infrastructure for that, right?
The infrastructure for that. It will result in those single-family houses. So what City Council is doing is making an investment in affordable housing in northeast Lubbock. That allows the developer to offer the property or the lot and some of the construction cost at a lesser cost to the home buyer. So we are accelerating affordable housing in that area of town. Like Mr. Chitas always says, rooftops. We need rooftops in northeast Lubbock and that's what this is going to bring.
So these would be, we're providing incentives.
Yes, sir.
For single-family homes that will be owner-occupied. Is that correct?
Owner-occupied. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
The developer does plan to build all the houses themselves, so the developer will not sell lots to other builders. So we'll have control of that as well.
And all that will be by contract. And Mayor, you mentioned incentives. The incentive is really the provision of that public side of the infrastructure that typically would get included in the lot cost. Counsel, you've got a precedent for that. There's a pretty successful housing development in east Lubbock that the city put in all of that base infrastructure in order to make those houses really nice houses and affordable homes. So we're on that same model, a lobby by contract. Contract comes to council, that's separate even than appropriating the dollars.
And just an update on the two contracts. One developer is just a little further along than the second. The first developer has that contract. Their legal team is currently looking at that contract. And I wanted to thank Ms. Leisure for helping us get that contract ready as well. I should have the contract to the second developer by the end of the week. So we should by March, just have these both to you right away.
Thank you, Mr. Howerton. Any questions for Mr. Howerton? Ms. Joy.
Okay, you've talked about what the city's going to do. We're going to do the, I guess you'd call it the water of the sewer, those kinds of things.
Streets as well.
The streets. Okay, so let's break this down so people understand it. Then the contractor is going to build the houses.
Yes, ma'am.
And sell them to someone, a prospective buyer, okay?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
The financing, where does that come from?
The financing will still come from an institution of banking, financial institution. They'll still go through the normal steps that any homeowner goes through to purchase a home.
Okay, and it's characterized as affordable housing. So what are we talking about in terms of, say, a 1,500 square foot home?
Well, I can't throw a number at you. What I can do is tell you that the homes that the first developer is going to build are three to four-bedroom homes, very nice homes comparable to what's over in Kings Dominion. The 26,000 to 27,000 investment that you're making in each lot will bring that cost for that, that family down for that, that single-family residence.
Bring it down by 26,000 to 27,000 dollars?
I can't put a dime to dime, but it should make a grain, should, quite a bit, yes.
Okay. We're not involved in the financing or any of that, simply.
No, ma'am. This is completely different. The only thing we're doing is infrastructure work, curb and gutter, streets, utilities.
And that's included in this housing number?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howerton. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, Eric's on his way up. Eric is working on the job training partnerships that we've discussed. Remember that we're kind of looking at a three-legged stool, so to speak, one being the talent pipeline management, which is at the moment focused really on providing some help to the medical community in Lubbock. The second is, and I don't know the correct term to describe it, but it's really providing, training and education for people pointed towards the trades to help them with everything from the very basics all the way up to here's your first step towards becoming a tradesman. The third leg will be our direct interaction and work with the various contractors in town that have licensed tradesmen and see what it is that we can do best to help them. Eric's going to talk a little bit about talent pipeline management and what we see is potentially the first step to bring to the council. So, Eric?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we are working on three projects as Mr. Atkinson mentioned. Currently, we're allocated at 3.5 million dollars as far as what council has set aside. One of those projects is the Talent Pipeline Management Program. That particular program currently has a medical focus. We're currently working with LITA on that particular project. The goal of that particular program is to increase the output of trained individuals that are going into the medical field. There's a pretty significant vacancy in being able to meet some of the medical field needs right now and it seems to be an ongoing challenge. And this program in essence is there to help ultimately increase the pipeline of those individuals either looking to go in to the medical field or maybe grow within the medical field, for example, going from an LVN to an RN. Currently, like I said, we've got 3.5 million dollars. I'll touch on a couple of the other projects. We are working on a technical skill project with another potential partner. We're currently in negotiations with them and looking forward to bringing something to you soon on that. And as Mr. Atkinson mentioned, we're also working on a licensed trades project, which we are in the process of working on, putting together a meeting with all the trades contractors, bringing them together and with the end goal in mind of really trying to determine what their needs are and how we can utilize the ARPA funds to help meet those needs. But we're continuing to move those projects and I'm hoping to have those to you very soon. With that, does counsel have any questions or comments?
Well, let's see. Let's start with Mr. Christian from Mr. Rahano.
I'll go from bottom to top on the questions in regard to the trades project. Do we have some numbers on, on what, what kind of void we have? How many, how many people do we need within our community to fill some of those jobs that relates to, to the trades?
We are still in the process of gathering that information. A lot of that, we hope, will hopefully come from that meeting with the contractors to figure out where the gaps are. So we, I can get you some data once we have it.
Would you define technical skills? That's a pretty big, you know.
Yes, sir.
But covering a lot of territory.
Sure. And one thing we're looking at between the three programs, we want to make sure there's no duplication. So that particular program, as far as technical skills, I mean, we're looking at some of the trades such as electrical and plumbing, but also some of the soft skills. So helping folks, you know, learn how to develop a resume or perhaps.
How about life skills?
Life skills.
Life skills.
A lot of these life skills, so.
Is that it, Mr. Christian? Okay.
So make sure. Ms. Patterson Harris.
Yeah, I thought you had your.
I was just, I was just going to make a funny. I was just going to say that this is your first time.
We've been missing out on that today. So it's, yeah, we've been here for two hours, so it's, let's go.
No, I was just going to say that this is Mr. Eric's first time presenting before the council and I just wanted to commend him with, with his information that he provided. That's all.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to be here.
I just wanted to get one in there.
I thought you were going to, I thought you might be going to give him a little Miss Mary lecture here, so I wasn't sure what was coming.
Miss Mary's tired today.
Okay. Eric, thank you so much for the work you're doing. It's just very, very important, very important category. Okay, back to Mr. Atkinson.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just to kind of conclude, draw your attention to the right side of the screen. Remember that we have discussed utility infrastructure. We've not pegged a number, but your housing project is largely going to be related to utility infrastructure. Finally, we've just adjusted the number and changed the term. We brought forth a couple of meetings ago, the concept of maintaining a contingency. So your balance or your contingency based on what's on the left side of the ledger at the moment is 15 million dollars.
And that would be net of any partnerships that we might already have. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's factored in.
Okay, so let's, let's go to, excuse me?
What's the current total?
Well, it means you've got 15 million left, so the total's 41 and change.
You still don't have the other kind?
No, that's, this is all, this is, this is assuming that both, both the total amount. So Mr., let's go to, let's go to small business, arts and nonprofits for a minute. Let's have a discussion. All of those would be, although different, all of those would be through some type of application, grant application process, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, let's, we've been talking about this a lot. I think we're probably to the point where we're ready to maybe take the next step.
Okay.
I'm, I'm skeptical as to whether we'll have as much uptake on the small business as we think, just based upon what I see in around the state.
Yes.
I think the arts and nonprofits, the arts in particular, some of, I think the nonprofit and arts will go, likely could go quickly. Mr. Atkinson, I'd like you to maybe work between now and the 22nd to come back with a plan to, and it could be multiple plans, but I know you've been having some, doing some work on this, but what would the next steps be? Who would we partner with to, to help, help us, you know, do these, this grant process? Because we don't have a, we don't have somebody set up to do this. And, you know, how, what you would suggest on this? I know you've gotten a lot of input from counsel on this. This is not something that's, you know, that's your, your first time you've dug into it, but.
Counsel, are you okay with him working on that, that direction? Mr. Christian's okay? Okay to my left here? Okay, Ms. Joy has a comment, I think.
Well, I think we talked about this, Mr. Griffith and I have talked about it, I know because we talked about it at the South Plains Association of Governments. And they are set up for this grant program. And it would appear to me that since they have worked with us, they worked with us on the loan program that was done through, I believe through LITA.
Correct.
And they have indicated that, that they are more than happy to assist in terms of doing the grants on our behalf. And so I would, I would strongly recommend that because they have the personnel in place. We do not. And, you know, the important, to me, what's important about this ARPA money is that it gets out to the people who need it. That it doesn't sit in a bank account somewhere while we stumble around trying to figure out what to do with it. So the sooner we can get this, these three going, and I know that Stacy Keith has worked on an application, particularly for arts and nonprofits, I'm not sure about small business. Ms. Girardi may have done a little work on that. But I, I think we need to make that decision and make it quickly so we can put some asterisks and start decorating these categories.
Certainly. And we have, we've been working with South Plains Association of Government. They are set up. They've got a great proposal in front of us. I think for your meeting on the 22nd, we need to bring forward to council kind of the, the conditions, the parameters, grant amount of X, but only if you did not get PPP or whatever, you know, the particular deals might be. Ms. Keith is well down the path and we can have that one in front of you on the 22nd as well. We've got our ideas for the nonprofits and we'll, we'll bring those.
Mr. Griffith, I think you were going to maybe make a comment. Do you have a comment to make on this?
Briefly, thank you, Mayor. I did have a conversation with the Director of South Plains Association of Government this morning and they are ready to activate as soon as we give them the go-ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Okay, so that's a big, that's a, we'll take care of a big piece of this. I think, I think that's a valuable next step. I think maybe, Mr. Atkinson, you might, you know, we might start with a million for the arts, a million for the nonprofits and maybe half of that for the small business, hold the other half and let us look at where we might, and if we need to reallocate it. I mean, I think we want to be nimble with this and, and we want to better understand what the demands are, I think. I mean, Ms. Patterson Harris?
How much did we allocate in the last cycle?
We did, we did 3 million for small business.
Three, it was an odd number, 3.4 something to that effect, and it went to multiple categories.
Two different tranches of that, but yes.
We did childcare, rental assistance, and grants to small business and individuals.
Right. Okay. Any further comments on, on, on ARPA? Mr. Christian, I would like you to maybe work with Mr. Atkinson a little bit. I know that we've got a placeholder here for parks. The more I think about these dollars and the, the more I reflect on how difficult it is to invest capital in our parks, I think this, we don't, we probably don't want to let this opportunity pass, but we probably need to get a little more, start getting a little more focused on this. So.
We've already had some conversations.
Okay, all right. At some point, we'll need to talk about that, too. Okay. Anything else on, on ARPA for, for today? Ms. Pat, let's see, it looks like, Ms. Joy?
I guess I have a question. We've talked about the grants, but have we talked about projects? In other words, if someone came to us and said, like to have some of these funds to build a water park, I'll just say that, just as an example, is that within the parameters of these ARPA funds?
I think a water park.
Water park, I think.
Water park may be a stretch.
Might be a stretch, but we know that general parks and recreation are, so I will say, you know, depending on who brought a project, they might fit into one of your prior categories, let's say nonprofits, if that's where it was coming. Remember that once the, the final, final rule came out, it, it again provided more and more discretion to the council. So I, I think there are probably things out here of which we're not aware at the moment that could possibly be in eligible use and would be subject to the council.
Is there the ability, for example, to require a match on a project using ARPA funds?
Absolutely. I think that's entirely within the council's control to do that. And you would really leverage, you can make more happen with the same dollars if you do that.
Okay. All right. That's what I need to know.
And I, I think some of you've probably heard, I think there are, I think we will see some proposals from some institutions, organizations, you know, that likely would, some of them probably merit some, some discussion, and particularly if we can help by providing a match or even a, some, sub seed to get, to get something going. That would be a big investment in our community. So. Okay. I think that takes care of work session, does it not? Let's, let's take our polls real quick. Mr. Atkinson, I've got, and Council, I've got seven, two, and both related, related items. So seven two, seven two one, seven two two, seven six, seven seven, excuse me, seven seventeen, and seven eighteen. Pardon me, I'm sort of cleaning mine up as we go here. Okay. Okay, so once again, seven two, seven two one, seven two two, seven six, seven seventeen, and seven eighteen.
Correct.
Okay.
Lubbock City Council will hold executive session today for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding personnel matters under section 551 dot zero seven four of the Texas Government Code, and to discuss the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices or a security audit under section 551 dot zero, zero seven six of the Texas Government Code. It is 3:48. The Lubbock City Council is recessed to executive session. Good evening and welcome. It's 4:57. Lubbock City Council's returned from executive session. We will begin our meeting this evening with our ceremonial items before our regularly scheduled meeting. We will start tonight with item 401, our invocation. Tonight, our invocation will be led by Executive Director of Lubbock Impact, Becky Robertson. Following Ms. Robertson's prayer, we will have the pledges led by the Mayor Pro Tem. If everyone would please rise.
Thank y'all for having me, first of all. Let us pray. Tell me, Father Lord, I thank you so much for your goodness and your kindness to our community. Lord, I thank you for how you watch over each one of us. And Lord, I thank you for this council, that, Lord, you've chosen out. And Lord, I pray that they would seek you for wisdom and knowledge and that you would guide them in their decisions. Lord, help them to be good stewards of the finances that are offered to them. Lord, I also pray that you would watch over each of the citizens, that, Lord, that are part of our community here in Lubbock, or meet the needs that they have. There are many in our, our community that are sick currently. Lord, there are many that don't have all the resources that they need to meet their daily needs for their families. Lord, I pray for provision. Lord, I just pray that you would just bless and show favor to those that are in the four corners of Lubbock, whether that's on the east, south, north, or west side of town. Lord, I pray that they would feel community and unity throughout Lubbock. Lord, I just pray for this meeting tonight and decisions that need to be made. Lord, may they be honoring to you and may they be protective to our city, to make it stronger. And Lord, I just thank you that we live in a community where we can pray and bring our needs and requests to you. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Please join us in the pledges to the American and the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, one ground, one and individual.
Becky, thank you again. We appreciate it. Tonight, we'll recognize a number of citizens who've agreed to serve on our boards and, and commissions. We have some, some 50 boards and commissions that are led, are citizen-staffed and led, and we delegate a lot of our business, very important business, to these groups. So if you would, when, I'm gonna, it looks like most everybody's attending tonight. That's good. Must be, must have had a good night here. So I'm gonna call you all forward. We'll do this recognition all at once. John Mark Bernal from the Citizens Traffic Commission. I didn't see John Mark. Maybe he'll, won't come in while we're doing this. The Housing Finance Corporation Board of Directors, Nicholas Bergfeld. I saw Nick. Ty Craft is Ty here? Okay. Shouldn't have talked about people being here. Urban Design and Historic Preservation Commission, Larry Harvey. I know Larry's here. Deborah Lavender Bratcher. Glad you're here. We've got a couple of members of the Veterans Advisory Committee that we're recognizing tonight. Tammy Lowry. Thank you for being here. And Angela Moore. All right, good. If you guys will come, come over this way, I promise I won't bite. So what I've, what we've got for, for each of these citizens is a certificate that says greetings, the members of the Lubbock City Council reposing special trust in the integrity of, in example, Nicholas Bergfeld, hereby appoint citizen to your specific committee to act within the jurisdiction and authority prescribed by the City of Lubbock in such capacity. And it's confirmed this eighth day of February 2022, signed by the mayor and the members of the Lubbock City Council. So I'm gonna hand these certificates.
You missed one.
Oh, did I?
Shannon's right here.
Oh, Shannon, I'm sorry. I did. You served so well. You know, you just served so well before. You got reappointed, you know? You should, you should have learned better than that. That's what happens. I'm sorry, Shannon. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Okay, Nicholas, there's yours.
Is that a clue we should not serve very well?
No, we expect you to serve very well. Very much. So, first of all, my sincere thanks. And I know I represent the council when I say this. Thank you for being willing to serve us and, or in many, some cases, continuing to serve. Some of you've done a number of roles. Like, what I like about this is we have citizens from all walks of our community. Some of you are very, very active in your, what you do every day, and some are like Larry Harvey, who's recently retired. And, you know, we tapped him on the shoulder and said, hey, we want, we need some help. And so we'll put that, that knowledge to work, and we're just so very, very thankful for that. So I would like us all to come out in front, if that would be okay. At least you, make sure you get your picture first. Let me get in the middle. Let's just sort of spread out here. Let me find. Y'all first, and then I'll be our photographer in here. Stay in town. Everybody's a photographer, it's.
Yeah.
Okay, miss you, please.
Yes, sir.
Official city photographer here. If we don't get a picture, it didn't happen.
Thank you so much.
We're too, we're too wide? Is that what you said?
And I'm short, so.
Okay, here we go.
Okay, I'm counting three. One, two, and three. One, one, two. One, two, and three. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. of February 2022. We're in our regularly scheduled first meeting for the month of February. The first item on our agenda is citizen comments. And we have a number of folks that have signed up to speak. And I'm just looking through these real quick to make sure. Okay, so we have one that would like to comment on item 721, and then four that want to comment on item 85. Eight five is an alcohol variance. Let me check something real quick. I'll make sure. It does not, there's not a public hearing required on that, so this would be the appropriate time to hear those comments. Okay, so I'll call first Allison Perry to, to, to comment on item 721. When you come forward, if you would read your name and address into the record, please.
My full name first is written.
I'm so sorry. They are written, and I'll pass them to the council. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Dye. Okay, we have now, we have four, four oral comments related to item eight five. I'll start with Mary Wallen. Is that the right, am I saying the right name correctly?
I figured I'd be that.
I'm sorry, Mary. I saw you out there. You're normally cooking something good when I see you.
I am normally cooking.
So, Mary, pull that, pull the microphone down just a little bit if you would. Okay, if you would, name and address for the record. You've got three minutes, please. If you, if you get close, when you get close, we'll give you a 30-second warning. Okay?
Okay. My name is Mary Waller. 5101 Avenue Q. It's the Cocoa Corner. It's 50th and Avenue Q. I'm the landlord of the Cocoa Corner. I have several tenants. I have a tenant who is asking for there to be some kind of waiver or variance for an alcohol permit. As I understand it, all, the rules have changed. This is the first time I've been here since I've been the landlord, and I've been the landlord since 2000. H.A. Sessions and Dub Rushing were the landlords before me. As, to the best of my knowledge, at the Cocoa Corner, every single space except one has had a liquor license at one time or another over the years since the Cocoa Corner was built, or since liquor was available for sale in establishments. The one space that has not had a liquor license is the Cocoa Palace, the space that Danny's Fins and Hens, Danny's Catering has occupied since 1983. However, the very first liquor license in Lubbock County, as I understand it, was in the basement of the Cocoa Palace, which is the furthermore property closest to the school. I think there's an issue with the school. We've been there since 1983. In all of the years that we have been there, and I'm, I'm, I'm somebody who's at work pretty much, almost all the time, to the best of my knowledge, there has never been an alcohol-related incident with any of the tenants or any of the businesses in that shopping center in regards to the school. There's an establishment there that has a license, and initially, when they moved in over there, they were open at seven in the morning. We were fascinated when we came in and somebody was selling alcohol at seven in the morning. Anyway, Embers, which is on the corner, which is now a party room, had a liquor license. That's 1601 50th. CC's, there's been a Chinese food restaurant. There's been a Seven Seas, I believe, was there. And that's 1605 50th. Right next to that establishment is the establishment that this young lady has wanted to open. And, does that mean my time's up?
Thirty seconds.
And prior to Danny's Fins and Hens opening a restaurant in that space in 1997, there was a liquor license there the whole time. The space has been kind of zoned or got a variance for a game room, and game rooms and party rooms are not allowed to have alcohol. The young lady who wants that space has spent probably $80,000 to $100,000 fixing up a space at 50th and Avenue Q, and I think she should be able to make a living the very best that she can, and a liquor license would help her. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Next to, to speak is Paulina Madrid.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Hi, good evening. My name's Paulina Madrid. I was here last month. And all I want to say is that last month when I was here, I was unprepared to even let you guys know what Tipsy's brought to the table or brought to the community or anything. I did throw out a few things out there. I do respect Mr. Stubblefields from LISD and his comments and stuff. I did call to try to make an appointment where we could meet face to face, but I never got a call back. I also went to the church, that's the closest to Tipsy's, and they knew nothing that was going, nothing that was happening. The name of the church is the Church of Blessed International, and they were so excited for us to have a Spanish restaurant there. And then I just want to let you guys know what we're willing, we're bringing to the table. We want to sponsor the kids in anything that they need, like for teens, footballs. The kids do play outside. I did ask if. I did ask if I could take a picture, and they said no. I did bring some pictures just so you guys could see how far the school is from me. Ms. Mary is the closest, and then CC's. Also, we bring employment to the community. We also are offering LISD 10% discount on all meals, even public servants, even senior citizens, all kids under eight eat free. And this was on the menu before we ever knew we needed a school separation variance. Also, we have surveillance 24/7. We put cameras. We're going to watch the parking lot in and out. I'm willing to adjust our hours on serving alcohol from 4:00 PM during school hours, Monday through Friday. I could start at 4:00 PM. Because I do understand that in the morning, maybe most of our orders will not want alcohol. We're just trying to serve the public. There is not a restaurant anywhere closer. There's Texas Tech Cafe, but nothing that is fancy, nice, pretty. And we also want to do TABC. We want to have a TABC license because we don't want to have to have BYOB and then not have control of the situation. We want to do it legal, you know, where I can say, hey, no, you can't come in. Or no, you can't drink, that's enough, you gotta go. That's all I'm asking. I'm willing to work with the school with our hours, even if we lose some revenue. That is fine, as long as that I get the permit. It's a separation permit from the school, and that is all I'm liking. And it's a free permit. And that's everything.
Thank you, Ms. Madrid. We may have you back when we get to the item, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, next to speak is Dr. Keith Graves. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, how are you?
Well, are you okay?
I'm doing absolutely wonderful, but I'm getting better.
Sounds like you should be up at the city council, then.
Dr. Keith Graves, address is 2303 17th Street. And I'm here talking on behalf of my friend. You know, she asked me to come and speak a few words about her dream, having the dream of putting the money into her dream and not having anyone, especially if she's trying to do right within the community. If she's trying to build the community, if she's trying to use the business to help the community grow and get stronger, then I think we should be looking for solutions instead of trying to prevent her from getting a liquor license. I think we should look for solutions on how we can help her get a liquor license or what we need to do in order to make sure that she has that license. Now, we need to present to our community the opportunity that if anyone has a dream, if anyone believes in themselves and they're willing to step forward, then we should be able to, the community should be able to come behind them and look for solutions for them. All of our heads put together, I'm quite sure we can find a solution that can solve this problem to where everyone wins. So I'm just here to support and saying, now, let's just figure a way that we can do this together. All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming, Dr. Graves. And finally, to speak on item 85 is Bill Stubblefield.
Good evening again, council and everyone that's here. My name is Bill Stubblefield. I live at 1742 East Cornell Street. And what I'll say is this, it's hard to take the role of the antagonist when your advocacy is for children. And I don't want this to be that. And so we refuse to accept the position as antagonist or enemy of what would appear to be progress. What we are understanding is that we have a goal of educating children. I think you guys were presented with information within the session earlier from our police chief that spoke to the number of DUIs that have been problematic here of late. Every establishment that has the potential or sells alcohol has the potential to contribute to that number. What we do with Lubbock ISD is believe in every child every day. When we want to build their dreams, we build them with education. We build them with academics. We build them with hopes for a future. Many of our children, as many of you know, are living in households that are at the low socioeconomic level. Many of those households are already problematically laden with substance abuse issues. I don't have to speak to some of you that sit on this dais to the extent in which substance abuse has destroyed families, that has stopped dreams, that has altered progress, that has disrupted lives. I've actually had the opportunity to help some of you on this dais with our Source to Solutions Symposium that deals directly with that, that deals with the mental health components and the stigmas attached to it. What we're asking with Lubbock ISD is for a vote of no. I'm willing to be recalled when item 85 comes to offer even further rebut if necessary. But we voted against this last month. And I'm asking the council to, again, stand firm on this issue and understand that I, the, the district does not see how alcohol helps children to foster and grow their dreams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stubblefield. Okay, that concludes citizen comments. We'll, we'll take that item up in a few, in a few minutes when we get to 85. Item six is next on tonight's agenda. It's comprised of the minutes from the December 15, 2021 Special City Council Meeting at the Electric Utility Board, the December 28 Special City Council Meeting of the Electric Utility Board, and the January 11, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting. Counsel, those minutes were distributed with our agenda package. Is there a motion to begin consideration? Mr. Griffith?
Mayor, thank you. A move for approval?
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. We've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? All right, counsel, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Any opposed by that same side? That motion carries six to zero. Item seven is next. Item seven is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of items considered to be routine that are enacted by one motion without separate discussion. If the council desires to discuss an item, that item is removed from the consent agenda and is considered separately. Tonight, counsel, we will, we've, we've got six pulls, 72, 721, and 722. We'll hear those all at one time, I believe. Is that okay, Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Okay. We've got then 76. And then we have 717 and 718. And those are, they were both referred to earlier. Probably have the, the chief or his designated brief us on both of those. And we can consider them collectively or individually, depending on the council's prerogative, okay? I'd open the floor for a motion to, to approve the consent agenda with the exact, the exception of items 72, 721, 722, 76, 717, and 718.
I'd make that motion to approve, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. There's a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. We have a motion to approve the consent, motion and a second, to approve the consent agenda, except for items 72, 721, 722, 76, 717, and 718. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, let's go to item 72, 7, it begins on page 62. 721 is on page 65. And 722, I guess, is on page 93. And I would imagine that Karen Murphy, director of our community development group, would be here to brief. Oh, there she is, as we speak. Ms. Murphy, please take it away.
Yes, sir. On the item seven is the, actually, budget amendment for two items. For the, we have additional funding that we're expecting from the U.S. Department of Treasury of $7 million. And then also, we have a budget amendment for additional funding from TDHCA for our CAPP and its American Rescue Plan funding. This is not our normal annual funding from TDHCA for CAPP. On the next item is our actual contract from TDHCA to the city. And that is for the 1.5, actually, $1,525,972. That is for utility assistance. And then we break that down, actually, we do another contract. And the next item is our contract with Lutheran Social Services, also known as Neighborhood House. And what we have budgeted for them or allocated to them is a total grant of $1,337,260. Part of that funding is broken out for them. They receive $184,367 for program services. That's basically their admin. And then they are also have, let me get to their contract, I'm sorry. So for the utility assistance and household crisis is $1,152,893. Of that utility assistance that we normally give them, the whole amount, we kept $50,001 to do household crisis in-house. We found that that was problematic, that they would take the application and then they would send it over to us. We would actually inspect, work with the contractor, get that heating and air conditioning repaired or replaced. And then we would send the invoice back to them. They would pay the contractor, and then we would reimburse them. So we decided to cut out the middleman, and we'll just, they give us the application and we do it.
Okay. So thank you for those quick, brief overviews of 72, 721, and 722. Ms. Joy?
I think the, the last words that you used had to do with the fact that the budget amendment has a different amount
Yes.
than the $1,525,972. No, the $1,337,260. And that's because you took the $50,000 out.
Right. And added it to our admin.
And added it to your admin.
Yeah, and we don't show the admin because we don't contract with ourselves.
Okay, all right. Now, I want, this is a lot of money, and, and, and it does a lot of good, okay? First of all, it's for low-income households in Lubbock County.
Yes.
Correct? It's not just the city of Lubbock. And what do you, do you define low income to be?
Well, it's, it's actually poverty level. So it's at $150,000, I believe, for CAPP, and it's poverty level.
Okay. And so when people want to participate in this program, there, there's two, well, there's actually three programs, I guess. But the one that has to do with paying energy bills and repairs to existing HVAC systems, there are two of those, correct?
Well, actually, the household crisis through this grant is for, just for heating and air conditioning.
Okay.
Okay.
Which grant?
The CAPP grant. So it's, that's the division under its household crisis.
Okay.
Yeah, the 722, sorry.
722, okay.
Thank you.
And it's existing. It does, the way it reads, it doesn't say you can replace, and that was kind of my question.
We can replace existing if it's beyond repair. So if we can't find the parts, if the part's outdated, or if it's just, it's going to cost more than, we can go up to $5,000 on this grant to repair or replace.
Well, that was my concern, because I can imagine some units would not be worth replacing. And then on the other, this one is the $1,337, correct? The 7.02.2, the $1,337,260. And then on 7.02.1, this also says low-income households.
Right.
And that it pays energy bills for Lubbock County residents and repair of existing heating and cooling. But that's one that community development is actually, you all are actually the grantee?
Yes.
On this one?
And then we send it out to Neighborhood House, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So if we put those two together, you're looking at about $2,913,232.
No, ma'am.
No?
No.
Okay.
So the $1,525,000, that is the, we're doing the contract from TDHCA to us.
Right.
And then the next contract is the contract going to Neighborhood House from the city.
But in any event, this total amount?
It's 1.5.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just 1.5.
Okay, we're accepted, and then it's going out? Well, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
How much money is there here?
Yes, ma'am.
And then there's a $7 million item.
Item 72.
Yeah, 72. What is that for?
That is for rental assistance. That is our rental assistance and utility assistance. And understand, the utility assistance that we're doing through USDT or the U.S. Department of Treasury is in paying the entire bill. And this is a one-time payment, just to get them caught up. So we're going to be looking at past due and then getting them just caught up. With CAPP, it's, you get them caught up to a point. TDHCA doesn't allow as far back as we can go with the USDT money. And then they only pay for electricity. That's all that CAPP pays for, it's just electricity.
So let's break those separate so people understand.
Okay.
The $7 million is going to be, to bring their bills current, is that right?
Yes, for utilities, yes.
For utilities? And when you talk about utilities, now, does that include electric, water?
Yes.
Sewer, all of, all of those?
Under that program, yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay. The other program just pays
Electricity.
for electricity.
Yes, ma'am.
And it does not necessarily bring them current?
It does, to the point that it will do multi-pays. So it could, they could get up to eight payments
Okay.
a year.
Okay.
So they, it does help along the way. It can, now, they still have to pay for their water, garbage, sewer, any other charges. But they will pay just for the electricity. But it, like I said, it does pay multiple times.
Okay, so inquiries about these funds being, being available, how did they get to you or to the agency that's handling those?
Neighborhood House actually has a DocuSign, an application on the web that they can do it. But they also can call Neighborhood House. And they can also look on our community development website. We have that information up there, too, the link to that application.
And so do, do you feel like that these funds are going to be utilized given the parameters that they, they work under?
Yes, ma'am. We've already received, I just talked to Ms. Joy Loper, the executive director of Neighborhood House. They've received just the month of January, because you have to do brand-new applications every year, 600 applications so far. They're processing about 200 a week, as fast as they can. Again, they still have the same barriers that we do, not having all the information and all of the documentation turned in at once. So that's, we have a back and forth sometimes with that. But yes, the funds will be utilized quickly.
Okay, and I, I think all of this, one, is to let them know what is available. But the other is to know that we don't sit on these funds. They come in and they go out very quickly to the people who need those funds. And your department does a good job of handling that.
Thank you.
To do a good job.
Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, I, I think I got lost in somewhere there, but, and with all apologies, but I thought the biggest piece of this was for rental assistance.
The $7 million, yes. We do about 90% rental assistance. The other is about 10% is our utility assistance.
I think it's appropriate, it's, it's, Mr. Atkinson and I were talking about it yesterday. There's places, and I'll let him, I'll let him make this point, and then we'll hear from Ms. Patterson-Harris. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, mayor, and council member Joy, thanks for the kind words. So the mayor and I were talking about earlier, as we've seen in statewide news, national news, all of the rental assistance money, and specifically, I'm talking about what came out as a result of COVID. So what Karen is talking about, the U.S. Department of Treasury, the COVID fund- So what Karen is talking about, the US Department of Treasury, the COVID funds, ARPA funds, CRF funds, tens of billions of dollars was sent out across the country for rental assistance, and a large portion of which has never been spent. Karen, how much of yours has not been spent, not counting your new money, the money you don't have yet?
Um, the only amount that we have right now is about 3 million. And that's our emergency rental assistance 2. That's our, that's not, the, the 7 million that we're expecting is from the first part that other communities didn't expend, so they're trying to reallocate. So we're, we're just doing this budget amendment to be prepared.
So what I would maybe state that just a little different. Her and her partners throughout the community have been able to put out so many of these dollars into people's hands that we're now getting dollars that went to other communities, or we're getting in lines, a better way to say that. We're getting in line to get the dollars from other communities who were not able to do it. So in Lubbock, if you need this assistance, we've had it. It's been going out quickly. And between community development and their partners, if you still are in that situation, get ahold of us. Get ahold of us. They've done a phenomenal job of it.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you. Ms. Murphy, I have a quick question and just some clarifications for folks if they're listening. The rental assistance and whatnot is not the only thing that the Comprehensive Energy Assistance Program can help with. You also stated that you can use those funds to replace or repair some systems. Talk to us about that, if there's a time, timeline, which folks can apply or whatever. Explain that program.
So all they have to do is apply. Um, there's no timeline, there's no, not like our Modern Rehab program, I think that's what you're getting at. Um, so with the rent, for the utility assistance, or actually for the household crisis, we call it household crisis. Um, we have to look at anyone that is 65 or older, or if they have children under five, is one of the criterias. Other is we, weather criteria. So if it's supposed to be really cold or really hot, we have to look at those. But then anybody can call to get that done. Now, it has to be owner-occupied. We can't do rent of property, that's the property owners. Those are the only stipulations, really. Um, it, it does, we try to do it as quickly as we can. But that application, typically what's happening is, if we have an application for, with Neighborhood House that is applied for utility assistance, then they're also going to be asking them at the same time, I have my heater or my air conditioner's not working. And so then that's when they ship that over to us, and we have a contractor for that, that we can implement that program.
So you get a lot of your referrals from those individuals who are needing, uh, utility assistance? But individuals can call and apply?
Yes, they can call Neighborhood House and do that application, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Joy?
Uh, Ms. Patterson-Harris brought up an issue that we've seen in these programs. And that is that it has to be owner-occupied in order to qualify. And, uh, sometimes we run into problems. They may think they own it, but actually, they may have inherited or had it because a parent had it, but they don't have any paperwork. Do you have anybody to refer them to, to help them with their title issue?
Okay, for this particular program, we do not. We do not, we don't check, actually, the ownership. If they are living there and they're paying their bills, they're not renting, and they're not paying their rent, they're not paying it to someone else, then we can help them. Head is a different line.
Well, and I think that's really important.
And we have more time, actually, you know, to assist them with getting those deeds cleaned up.
Yeah, that's really important. Because if they can, if they're living there, paying their bills, and you have proof of that, then you can help out of these funds.
Yes ma'am.
Alright, good. Thank you.
Okay, council, um, any further discussion on this item? So I'll open the floor for a motion to begin consideration of 72, 721, and 722. Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Thank you, Ms. Joy, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Christian. Okay, council, further questions or discussions on the motion to approve items 72, 721, and 722? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, let's move now to item 76. It's on page 125. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, item 76 is the next set of the elevated water storage tanks for the city. Mr. Josh Kristin X, City Engineering Department, uh, is going to walk us through that.
Josh has become sort of a frequent flyer here, Mr. Atkinson.
Josh has. Mr. Keenum's been very effective in his scheduling. Um, we appreciate that, though. Josh does a great job for us.
He does, he does. Just, just want to duly note that, so take it away, Josh.
One of the things we've asked Josh to talk about today is, why, why are we doing this? Um, we've not had elevated tanks, new ones, in a long time, and some of these are replacements. But Josh is going to tell us why we do it, what we get as a result thereof, and certainly the cost and so forth. But Josh?
Absolutely, thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I appreciate your time today. This item before you, item 7.6, is a resolution, uh, asking you guys to execute a contract with Landmark Structures to build two new elevated storage tanks for us. So these, these tanks will provide the ability for our citizens to have, uh, more efficient pumping system, a more efficient pumping system, water supply system, which in turn will help our water system. Uh, hang on, let me start over. Let me take a breath.
From the top.
There you go. So these, these, the purpose of these tanks, first of all, is a TCQ requirement. TCQ requires us to have X amount of gallons of water above for elevated storage. That's 100 gallons per service connection. And so we are trying to do that with the two tanks that we have currently under construction, one at 50th, one at 104th. Those are on our west pressure zone. These two are proposed to be in our east pressure zone, so this is the next phase. And those will both add 4 million gallons of elevated water to our system. So these, these tanks are more efficient for our water supply system. Once these tanks are in service, they'll reduce our pumping costs, which will help our citizens in the long term. These tanks will pay for themselves. Um, within eight years of conception, when all the tanks are built, we start paying these tanks off because of reduced maintenance costs, reduced pumping costs across the city.
So you rely less on pumping because you, you just pump it once and then you gravity-feed it from there?
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
That is the system.
Tell us where these two are. It says 87th and 3rd Street. That's, that's pretty, uh, those are pretty.
Pretty vague, yes, sir. So the, one of the tanks is at 3rd and roughly University. It's at a city facility. It's at pump station number three. It's right there behind the apartments off 3rd Street. And so it's not exactly on University, it's kind of tucked in a little bit. It's right there by those, behind those apartments. Uh, the one on 87th, which is in the plan, says 87th Street. That one's on 87th and P. That's also at a city, city facility. It's all going to be at the backside of our solid waste facility out there.
Okay. Um, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Behind Chick-fil-A.
Behind Chick-fil-A, yes ma'am, exactly. Sorry.
May everybody knows.
Find out where Chick-fil-A is, that's correct.
I like that. Ms. Joy?
Well, the reason we wanted the why was, we operate right now under TCEQ.
Yes.
But we're operating with what we would call, what, a waiver, some sort?
Kind of under an exception because of not having as much water stored overhead as, as a system should. And something Josh I know was leading to, um, besides the efficiency, ultimately the reduced cost for the pumping systems, electricity, the pumps, all, all that. You know, it's really a, it's a safety mechanism as well. Uh, as long as there's water in those tanks, we can keep the system pressurized without those pumps. We can't do it long, we've got to still have the pumps. But it, this puts us in so much better position. They're expensive. Um, this set is more expensive than the two that we did, um, a year and a half ago. But, uh, all in, this is good for your water system.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that it's ever been explained in, in a manner of the, of who, what, where, and where kind of thing. And, um, I appeared on a radio program and we talked about it, and the fact that you're pumping up, and then gravity goes down, and somebody called in and said, I didn't know what I was talking about. So I want them to know, from, from the real person who does this work, why we're doing it. Uh, it's not cheap, we understand that. But if it pays for itself in seven to eight years, uh, I think the citizens, uh, are getting a bargain.
Yep.
So thank you.
Josh, once again, just as a reminder, uh, this is in this year, this is in the budget this year, correct? So all we're doing is executing something we approved. Um, you've gone out for bids now, you've brought it back, and a little more than what we expected, but we have ample dollars to, to do the projects. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, anything else for Josh? Glad you made Ms. Joy, I'm glad you proved her right, okay? I mean, you want to stay on her good side, so.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, thank you, Josh. Council, is there a motion to begin consideration of item 76? Thank you, Mr. Griffith, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there further discussion on 76? Questions for staff? All those in favor of the motion to approve item 76, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. Let's move now to item 717. Item 717 is on 329, begins on page 329. Uh, we'll also get briefed on 718 while we're at it. It begins on page 342. Chief Baron, take it away.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having us in front of you this evening. I'm here to introduce, uh, first, a memorandum of understanding between the City of Lubbock and Lubbock Police Department and the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms in regards to an agreement with, uh, the NIBIN system. It's the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network. And what that is, is the ATF provides us with a NIBIN machine that we take and enter the shell casings from, uh, different crime scenes and from weapons that we recover, uh, be it stolen or a found weapon or whatnot. And we enter that into the system, and those are compared nationally, much like a fingerprint. Uh, so think of it as a fingerprint for a firearm. And we can use that to tie crimes together and suspects with crimes. Um, we actually used the, the NIBIN system in 2021 to tie together, uh, a homicide that we really didn't have a lot to go on. Uh, we tied it with a crime in another, another city about 120 miles away from here. And we're able to, to obtain some suspect, excuse me, information from a shooting that occurred there. So it's a, it's a great system. It's something that, uh, we look forward to having here. We already have a person that's trained up to be able to enter, uh, the firearm data into the machine. Um, right now, we are either sending our, um, evidence out to California or are physically transporting it up to Amarillo. So it's not quite as efficient as it will be with our own machine.
Okay, let's, before we go to, to the next item, any questions on 717 for Chief Baron? Mr. Christian?
Will that piece of equipment be housed in, uh, LPD? It won't be with the ATF? It'll be in, in our facility?
Correct. It will be in our facility, yes.
Okay, because I know you'll do some, a lot of things with ATF otherwise.
Right, yes, sir.
I think I saw, maybe the best news was it didn't cost us anything for three years, is that correct?
For three years, yes, sir, that's right.
We're here from the federal government, we're here to help. That's good.
For three years.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, why don't you run over, uh, run through 718, if you would, please, Chief?
Yes, sir. The second item is an inter-local agreement between the Lubbock Police Department, City of Lubbock, and Arizona State University, uh, for a study of intimate partner homicide. And what Arizona State University hopes to do with this study is replicate studies that have been done in other cities across the state and the country and determine what crime tops and, uh, the precipitating factors to those crime tops occur here in Lubbock and the more rural areas of the state of Texas. The goal is to find, uh, preventative indicators, uh, and to be able to train patrol officers to, to see that and to send, get the victim in touch with services and the suspect in, in, in touch with the jail to prevent further instances and ultimately prevent homicides.
Okay, once again, a situation where we're partnering with higher education. They're bearing the cost of this as part of their research grant, I would, I would imagine. But we get, we get the benefit of, of their work.
Yes, sir.
Okay, questions for Chief Baron? Mr. Christian?
Just a quick question. When we do get into this, would it be appropriate for us to, you know, have some more information about how they go about engaging these, uh, the, the folks that we're trying to help? I would be curious to know about that a little bit, so.
Uh, yes, we'll, we'll.
And a little more data, have the stat, and how they go about collecting that data? And how, how they really go about trying to help these people in a more ground-level way? I would be very curious about that.
Yes, sir. They'll, they'll share, they'll share the results of the study with us, and then those results will be how they conducted the study and how they reached out to the, um, survivors and, uh, people that were involved.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Ms. Joy?
What, what is the timeline on this?
We're looking at data from the years of 2016 through 2020.
To 2020?
Yes, ma'am.
2020 is the year of COVID, that will be interesting.
It will.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anything else for, for, for Chief? Thank you very much. Council, you okay considering these two together?
Move to, to approve 717 and 718 together.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Joy, and second, Mr. Massengale? Is there a discussion on this motion? Seeing none? Uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve items 717 and 718, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? Motion carries six to zero. That concludes the consent agenda. Alright, we'll move now to number eight on our agenda tonight. Number eight is a, uh, is our regular agenda, begins with item 81 on page, uh, 480. Item 81 is to consider one appointment to the Transportation Policy Committee of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Lubbock Metropolitan Plan, Metropolitan Planning Organization. Um, and I just, I want to spend just a minute and, and describe for folks that don't understand what the MPO is, what it is. It's a, it's a critical part of, of, of our city government. We work, it's where we interface with TechDOT and with the county, with Wolfherth. And it's where we do transportation planning for the region. And it's a, a, a big job. And for as long as I've been part of this council, Jeff Griffith, Councilmember Jeff Griffith has, uh, served, uh, on that MPO. In fact, led it for a two-year period, uh, and led it very, very well. He has, uh, resigned from that, pending the end of his, uh, with the end of his term coming and feeling like it's time to stand aside. And, uh, we are, um, uh, we're going to, uh, take action tonight, if, if the council approves it, to, to appoint, uh, uh, Mr. Massengale, uh, to take his, his place. He will serve along with Ms. Patterson-Harris, uh, the city manager, uh, and, and myself. So I would open, um, for the floor for a motion, uh, to consider, uh, someone to, Mr. Mr. Griffith, would you, could you offer a motion, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would move to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Steve Massengale to the Lubbock Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Thank you for that motion, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? That motion carries six to zero. Once again, Mr. Griffith, thank you. Mr. Massengale, thank you for being willing to serve. Okay, council, we've got, um, uh, we've got three similar items, um, coming from planning. Items 82, 83, and 84. I think I might let, uh, Mr. Isom, if it's okay with you, brief us on, brief us on all of these. These are going to require their own public hearings. We'll have to take those, uh, we'll take those separately, uh, as, after we hear from Mr. Isom. But, uh, Brian, if you want to start with item, um, 82, this is, uh, begins, begins on page 482. Alright.
So item 82 is to hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance regarding a petition for annexation, um, from the property owners, uh, listed here. This is an area of land that's generally described as 986.51 acres adjacent to the southeastern city limits of the City of Lubbock, currently sections 19 and 20, Block E, Lubbock County. With that, any questions? We approved the municipal service plan agreement for this annexation, I believe, in our last December meeting.
Okay, anything for Mr. Isom on this one?
Did you say it's voluntary?
This one is a voluntary.
Okay, so Mr. Isom, when you say we approve the service plan, just remind everybody what that, what that means. Because we're going to, we're going to do three of these. I'm not going to ask you to do it every time, but remind everybody what, what that means.
So the first step in voluntary annexation is the city staff and applicants or the petitioners for annexation sit down and come up with a service plan, which tells you how city services will be offered to that property, uh, and when they'll be offered. The next step after that is to hold a public hearing. We have certain notification requirements from the state, so it generally skips one city council meeting from the municipal service plan, skip one, then the next, the. city council meeting from the municipal service plan, skip one, then the next, the public hearing for annexation. And then there would still be one more second reading of all these annexations if approved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, any questions on item 8.2? Okay, let's go to item 8.3. It's also a voluntary annexation. It's on page, begins on page 533.
This, item 8.3 is also a public hearing and considering an ordinance regarding a public voluntary petition for annexation from, this is from Tigress Development. This annexation is for approximately 30.57 acres in Section 10, Block E of Lubbock County. This is adjacent to the southeastern city limits of the City of Lubbock, north of 114th Street and east of University. And this municipal service plan was approved at January 11th meeting.
A month ago, okay. Thank you, Mr. Isom. Any questions on item 8.3? Okay, let's go to item 8.4. It's also an annexation, begins on page 567.
Item 8.4 is for a public hearing and to consider an ordinance regarding a voluntary petition for annexation from Loop 88 LLC, Lava Flow LLC, and Starlight Development LLC. This annexation is for approximately 1,088 acres, is located in Sections 9 through 14, Block AK, Lubbock County. This one is located southwestern to the southwestern city limits, south of 130th Street and west of Milwaukee Avenue. And this municipal service plan was also approved January 11th.
Okay, questions for Mr. Isom on this one? Ms. Joy?
On annexations, is it necessary that the property to be annexed at least be adjacent to some portion of the current city limits?
It is required to be contiguous to our current city limits and within our ETJ.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, we'll go back to item 8.2, page 482. Local government code requires a public hearing for the city council to consider annexation of property. At this time, I will open the public hearing in regards to the annexation of an area of approximately 986.51 acres adjacent to the southeastern city limits of the City of Lubbock, south of 146th Street and east of Avenue P. Is there anyone that would like to speak either in favor or against this annexation? If so, please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Payne.
Evening, Mayor. Thomas Payne, 15309 FM 1730. Mainly, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I know before the night's over, the mayors, y'all may be tired of hearing from me, and the mayor's thinking, well, we got tired of hearing from you a long time ago.
I thought about teeing you up first, but then I decided, no, we'd let you wait till the end.
I appreciate that very much. These annexations are pursuant to one of my favorite sayings in life. I'm sorry if that one. So sorry, I thought I was prepared. I always come with my favorite sayings. Tonight, the one that applies says, be decisive. Right or wrong, make a decision. The road of life is paved with flat squirrels who couldn't make a decision. I believe the one legacy of this council in 20 or 30 years, that was funnier than I thought it was. The legacy of this council in many years to come will be a legacy of decisiveness in regard to the growth of the City of Lubbock. And the council's support of a number of annexation requests, it reflects that attitude. Without the support of the council, there is not much ability for anyone to grow the city, and it requires a partnership between private and public. And this council has been a great partner and very supportive in terms of the concept of growing the City of Lubbock, and I appreciate that. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you may have about either items 8.2 or 8.4.
All right, so we're only on 8.2 right here because of the way the state law is written, so we'll have to do 8.4 separately. So, but we'll let you speak to that in a moment. Anything for Mr. Payne? Thank you, Mr. Payne. Any others that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to item, to, item Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is there a motion to approve the ordinance to annex this property?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Got a motion and a second to approve 8.2 on first reading. Is there any further discussion?
I just wondered how long this property had been in the Maka family.
That's a great question. This is actually the home place of part of the Maka clan. And I actually don't know how many years that the clan has owned this piece of land. I think it's now to the maybe third generation. So it's been in that family for a long time, and I anticipate that they will be farming this tract of land for a long time to come. And I should take the time to say thank you publicly to them because their support and cooperation was required in order to be able to annex, to annex the land that I own east of 87, because without them, it did not join the city limits. So I appreciate their support as well. Thank you. Thank you for asking.
Other questions or comments? Okay, Counsel, we've got a motion to approve item 8.2 on first read. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by that same side? All right, motion carries six to zero. Ms. Patterson-Harris, now will that be in, will that be in District, is that, how does that, where's the line? That's not District 2, because the way it's written, the way the line is.
The next one.
Okay. Okay, let's go to eight, item 8.3. Item 8.3 is on page 533. The local government code requires a public hearing for the city council to consider the annexation of property. At this time, I will open the public hearing in regard to the annexation of an area of approximately 30.57 acres adjacent to the southeastern city limits of the City of Lubbock, north of 114th Street and east of University Avenue. I'll open the public hearing for anyone that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this item. Anyone that would like to speak either in favor or opposition to item 8.3? Nobody's racing up here. All right, I'll close the public hearing. Is there, Counsel, is there a motion to begin consideration of the ordinance to annex this property? Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris, for the motion, the second, to Mr. Massengale. Open the floor for discussion, Counsel. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you. Is the proponent here?
Anybody from Tigress, Tigress here? I don't see, I know they were here last time, they talked about it last time when we did the service plan, but I don't see anybody here tonight. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve item 8.3 on first read. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed by the same side? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, finally, at least from an annexation standpoint, let's go to page 567. That's where item 8.4 begins. The local government code requires a public hearing for the city council to consider annexation of property. At this time, I will open the public hearing in regards to the annexation of an area of approximately 1,088 acres adjacent to the southwestern city limits of the City of Lubbock, both south of 130th Street and west of Milwaukee Avenue. Is there anyone that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this Welcome back, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll step forward again to answer questions. Would you like for me to take a moment and read my quote again, or?
No, it's okay. I think we got it the first time.
Once was enough, okay.
Yeah. The road of, the road of good intentions was paved with those who couldn't make, can't make a decision, right? Or something like that.
That's close enough, Mayor. You got, you got the idea.
Got it.
This, this annexation request involves several parcels of land and is an extension and kind of on the heels of an annexation done a year ago of the section of land to the east in Block AK-10. And finishes the combination of approximately 2,500 acres of land that's contiguous. There is a plan to provide water and sewer service to all of the land that you see that's subject to annexation. And these requests are not random, so before the request comes to the council, the developer has to present to the city a plan, city staff a plan for utility services, which was done. I mentioned before, I'll say again, the city staff has spent a lot of time on this, and I appreciate their effort, time, suggestions in regard to a number of issues that are always involved with annexation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Ms. Patterson-Harris, it's not on your dime.
Okay, Ms. Joy, do you have a question?
Who's paying for those services?
So we discussed this at the last, well, two council meetings ago. There is no obligation on the part of the city to pay for installation of utility services or of streets, for that matter, to land that's annexed in this, in this fashion. So the intention would be for those, that infrastructure to be paid for by the developer or potentially in some cases, if there are items that are already proposed by the city, there could be some combination of that, but in no case would the city be asked to spend any more money than they were already going to spend on infrastructure that was on the, within the city plans. Yes, ma'am.
Other questions for Mr. Payne? Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other speakers either in favor or in opposition to item 8.4? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, open the floor for a motion to begin consideration of item 8.4. Mr. Massengale?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengale. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Christian. Counsel, is there further discussion on this item? All those in favor of approving item 8.4 on first read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, we'll now go to item 8.5. Item 8.5 is on page 632. It's an alcohol separation variance. We had four citizens speak to us in, citizen comment about this case. Mr. Isom, why don't you lay this out again? I'm then going to ask either you or Mr. Weaver to talk about why we're seeing this again, okay? Because we just saw this last month. So take it away, please, Brian.
Item 8.5 is to consider a resolution approving or grant, or grant, and granting a variance from applicable 300-foot minimum distance provisions of the City of Lubbock ordinances. This is located at 5101 Avenue Q, Suite A, and it's an alcoholic beverage permit for Tipsy Sports Grill and Bar. Again, this one was heard on the January 11th meeting and was denied unanimously by city council. And to speak to your question, sir, there is nothing in our ordinance that would not allow someone to come back every meeting if they're denied. There's nothing that prohibits them from coming back and requesting the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. I think that's consistent with what Mr. Weaver shared with me, and I think you indicated this is always maybe the second time you can remember this happening in the last, since alcohol election?
Yes. Since 2009, I can only recall two instances where somebody came back subsequently to the council after a denial.
Okay.
There may have been a few others, but I can only remember two distinctly, so it doesn't happen very often.
Okay, all right. I had a couple council members ask me, that's why I wanted you to comment on that, yeah.
Yeah, I think the most recent one was about a year and a half ago.
Okay, so Counsel, is there, is there a motion to begin considering, first of all, were there any questions for Mr. Isom? I'd let him get away. Anything for him? He's close by if we need him. Okay, are there any, is there a motion to begin consideration of item 8.5?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. We've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Ms. Griff, Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask Mr. Stubbeville back. I should say trustee, Vice President Stubbeville.
Yes, sir, Mr. Griffin.
Thanks for coming back up. On the map where obviously the LISD property is, it also is notated that it's a YW Care at Hodges Elementary. Is that still, does that still go on?
That is correct. And also, the principal for Hodges Elementary, Ms. Alice Vines, has joined me if you would care to address any of those questions as well with her as to the total functionality of what takes place throughout the school day. But yes, we do have Y Care.
I am really concerned about the, really the hours. Principal, do you mind coming up?
Yes, you are correct. We still have, I'm sorry.
You don't want to miss your opportunity to get in the limelight here.
I was coughing a while ago, so I don't want to be the one coughing all over you. So yes, we do have Y Care still, and our Y Care students, some of them are there till 6 o'clock in the evening, but then we also do have an after-school club as well that's there till about 5:00 in the evening as well. And so we have students at school, you know, and they're, they go outside still, some of them walk home, some of them are picked up. But yes, we have students at school up until about 6:00 every evening.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for coming up and answering. That was my main question.
And before, before you leave, let's make sure while you're here that there's no one else that has a question for?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, anything else for, 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 for Mr. Stubbeville?
I'll ask Mr. Stubbeville a question.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Stubbeville, and I'll echo Mr. Griffith's comments. Thank you for your service. We hear lots of these on the city council. Several of these over the past few years have been adjacent to LISD properties, and we haven't heard back from the district. Why this one?
Probably because of the extent to which we're doing things at Hodges Elementary. Again, with the programs, the specialized programming, with the new state mandate of it being what's known as a SGS School System of Great Schools initiative as well, we have a new type of programming that we've implemented at three of those campuses, not just Hodges, but also with Irvin and Alderson. They're part of what's known as the Lubbock Partnership Network that's designed to enhance the academic rigor for schools that are somewhat struggling, that are in low economic status, that are high free and reduced lunch. And it was part of Senate Bill 1882, an initiative that was helped led by And it was part of Senate Bill 1882, an initiative that was helped led by Senator Perry, state reps Burrows and Frulo, when we were trying to create the ideal feeder pattern. Many of you know that some years ago, Dunbar Middle School was facing closure. Well, what we realized is that the product that's being sent upward was not the best. I believe we hired Alice as one of our rock star principals, as a turnaround principal, to go over there and spearhead the rigor that we've got over there, to send stronger sixth graders to Dunbar, to Dunbar. So, before she got there and before we joined the partnership, the network, the school was not performing at a level that the state was in agreement with. So, with the high performance that's taken place, we haven't had true star data, right, since the pandemic since 2020. We haven't had the accountability that the state normally requires. We've been blessed to have that waived for a couple of years. But I think we did just a practice-type test, and Mrs. Jimenez, you can correct me if I'm wrong with this, that their scores now are significantly higher than what they used to be with the project-based learning initiatives that are out there, with the intense extracurricular activities, the after-school programming, the mentorship, the tutoring that takes place. So, we don't want to jeopardize that in any way. Again, the role of the school, as I mentioned earlier, is to be the advocates for the advancement of children, not to be the antagonists and the enemies of the community, the adversaries of the community. That's not what we're here to do. We're here to educate the leaders of tomorrow, and we don't want anything to hinder that progress. And the ordinances that were established, well, again, in that time in which these were written, we weren't seeing the kind of problems that we're seeing today. I don't think anybody is unaware of that, unaware of that. So, we know that the programming that takes place and the specialized instruction that is taking place over there is very real. A lot of those families live in the apartment complex that's directly to the south. Many of them walk. Many of those students walk home. I believe it's the, I still know it as Cricket Court Apartments.
The Ella.
The Ella Apartments, the Ella Apartments. And I think Chief Mitchell has spoken to those, to the issues there in times past. We've seen some of that stuff go down. Lubbock ISD partnered with Texas Tech a few years ago, and we used to conduct family life academies at the Ella Apartments, and we're hoping that that kind of initiative can be rebirthed through what we do now.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbeville.
You've been there for ten.
Other comments or questions? Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Counsel, any discussion on this one? I know we had a lot of discussion a month ago. Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor to approve and grant a variance from the applicable 300-foot minimum distance provision of the city of Lubbock's ordinance 200900060 at 5101 Avenue Q, Suite A for an alcohol beverage permit for Tipsy's Sports Grill and Bar. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. All those opposed by that very same sign?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails zero to six. We'll move now to item 8.6. Item 8.6 is on page 649. You'll recall that last month, or last meeting, we saw two, heard two annual reports from our tax increment finance districts. This week, at this meeting, we're getting the final one of those reports, which is from the North Overton Tax Increment Finance District. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jared Campbell is going to be back tonight for his encore performance. Jared, if you would?
So, Jared, I thought I saw Cheryl over there earlier. Did I see her there? Was she here? But she's still just letting you do this just because you're so good at it? Is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
That's good. A little bit like what Josh is having to do. Y'all are, yeah. Take it away. It's good to see you. We're glad you're here. Please take it away.
Yes, sir. Thank you, counsel and Mr. Mayor. This annual report is for the North Overton Tax Increment Finance District, which is located just to the northwest of here, right across from Texas Tech University. With this tax increment finance district, the net taxable value of the district is currently 525.2 million, which is an increase of 498.2 million from the base value in 2002. In fiscal year 2021, the revenues for the district, for the TIF, property tax revenue came in at 4.5 million. Other revenues came in at 861.5,000, totaling 5.3 million. Expenditures, operating expenditures came in at $18,489. Cash funded capital was 1.5 million, and the debt service was 3.1 million, totaling expenditures of 4.65 million for fiscal year 2021. Capital projects expenditure for the 2021 fiscal year, $81,900 was spent for Roy Furr Park, Pioneer Park, and $109 for North Overton TIF's street improvements. Total fund balance for North Overton TIF is 6.2 million, and unrestricted cash on hand is 4.7 million. The two debt schedules you see here, the one on the left is the total debt for North Overton TIF, and the one on the right is specifically for the conference center at the Overton Hotel. This is the boundary map for the TIF. And do you all have any questions?
Mr. Campbell, will we please go back to the debt page?
Yes, sir.
So, the conference center debt is included in the debt on the left, or you broke it out for us? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The conference center debt is included in the debt schedule on the left.
All right, thank you. Ms. Joy, do you have a question?
Yes. When you showed that map, it looks like there's still a little bit of the TIF that's not developed. Is that correct over on the east side? I guess my question is, is it fully developed?
Not completely. I do believe, and I would ask Cheryl to correct me if I'm wrong, but I do know that there is a hotel currently being built on Avenue Q that is in the TIF, and I'm not sure about the other.
Yeah, most of the big properties are done. I mean, they've all been developed.
Well, we have some little properties maybe that'll be redeveloped, but for the most part, Overton is pretty much done as far as new development.
And when does this TIF expire?
That would be December 31st, 2031.
2031, okay.
Is the south boundary correct on this, Ms. Brock?
Yes, sir.
So, it goes all the way to Broadway?
For some reason, I thought I'd checked that before, and it goes to Main.
It doesn't go to Broadway.
It doesn't, well, the PID does not. The PID and the TIF boundaries are different, and I think that's what you're remembering. The PID boundary only goes to the alley, I believe, between Main and Broadway.
Okay.
And I can get you maps for both so you can see, but the maps are not the same for the TIF and for the PID.
So, this is correct?
That must be the difference.
So, that goes then to the centerline of that street of Broadway?
It does include one side, not the other side. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Brock, before you leave.
Yes, ma'am.
Not ignoring you, when this TIF expires?
Yes, ma'am.
In 2031. What happens?
When the TIF goes away and all of the debt is paid, any money remaining in this TIF will go back to the taxing jurisdictions that actually it came from to start with. In other words, it'll be split back between the taxing jurisdictions based on the percentage that they paid in.
And then going forward, in the years forward, they'll just be taxed?
The city will get all of the tax for North Overton instead of just the 26.4 million, as will the county, the water district, and the hospital district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else for Jared? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, counsel, we've got, I think we need to, I think we need to accept this report. I'll open the floor for a motion to do so. Thank you, Mr. Christians. Thank you for, got a motion to accept this report or approve it, second from, motion for Mr. Christians, second for Mr. Massengill. Counsel, is there further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed by the same sign? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, item 8.7 comes from our finance team. It's regarding notice of intent around revenue bonds for the water and wastewater system. And got the dynamic duo of Mr. Kostlich and Mr. Bowles here this evening. Mr. Kostlich, by the way, if you're following along at home or in the room, it's on page 661. Mr. Kostlich, would you please take it away?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, good to be with you tonight. So, the action before you tonight is a resolution authorizing us, the finance department, to publish notification. We always preface this and clarify this, that this is not going forward with the actual issuance of debt. This is just putting it out there per the state requirement and per our charter requirement to publish the notification that we are contemplating doing a debt issuance later. The actual authorization will come later in a parameters ordinance. So, tonight, we have a water and wastewater revenue bond in front of you. There will be two projects that we're contemplating issuing debt for. One is pump station two at the Southwest Water Reclamation Plant. That is a $6 million project. Those are improvements to that pump station. And then we have a $2 million project, which is a south sewer, sanitary sewer extension, so phase four of that extension on the south Lubbock sanitary sewer. That, way too many S's in there, but that's what that project is for. So, tonight, we are contemplating, I'll let Mr. Bowles go over the technical data behind this and a little bit about the market and the issuance itself, but I will let you know that because this is such a small issuance, we are contemplating a 10-year bond on this, 10-year revenue bond, and we are going to look at a competitive issue normally, and historically, we do a lot of negotiated issues. Just a little bit different mechanism for us, but we are looking at a competitive issuance. With that.
You meant southeast?
Southeast Water Reclamation.
All right.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah.
Not southwest, Southeast Water Reclamation Plant. All right, Mr. Bowles.
Anything for Mr. Kostlich before we hear from Mr. Bowles? Okay. Matt, welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. Glad to be here tonight, and Mr. Kostlich teed that up nicely, and I will say that this comes at a rather unique time. There's been lots of wringing of hands, and the press has been really good about putting lots of information out about interest rates. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, just saying there's a lot of information out there, and I want to cut through that in a way that hopefully gets to a bottom line for you all and makes it a little more understandable. And that's the way we always start off. We've got some economic data on the screen for those who are watching and in front of council. Most of this page speaks to general economic conditions as it relates to where we stand today. A lot of information, obviously, bantered back and forth in the equity markets with respect to volatility there, and it's sort of been a bouncing ball since day one of this year, and the bond market has followed suit. I will get into a little bit of information about Fed speak in just a minute, but we do talk about what our anticipation around activity in 2022 will be, but I do want to remind you that when we talk about Fed action specifically with the Fed funds rate, we're really only talking about the short, the short, short end of the yield curve, so it doesn't necessarily affect long-term borrowing. And to Mr. Kostlich's point, definitely doesn't affect what would happen in a 10-year structure. So, we'll get some numbers in front of you in just a minute on that. In the lower left-hand corner on this page, we recap the municipal market data index, and this is a yield curve that goes from years one to 30. The highest point on here is shown in a dark purple color there. That's the 15-year average curve. So, quite a bit above where we stand today, which is in the green. A year ago today, we were at that light blue shade there, so we have moved up, but not all that much really. And given what the treasury market has done in just the last couple of three or four weeks here, this is really not much of a move in comparison. So, I feel really good about where the market stands today. I will say that in the upper right-hand corner, there's a noticeable lack of supply, and I think that's one reason why our market has been so robust and in demand. I'm not real sure what that's about, but I think volatility drives uncertainty, and when that happens, people hit the brakes for whatever reason. And so, we do expect that to pick up for the balance of the year, but your credit, and we'll talk about your credit in just a little bit, will shine and be well-received in the marketplace.
So, overall supply or just, or tax-free?
Overall supply in both the tax-free and taxable muni space has been lower. And let me use that as a segue to saying that you all chose last year to do most of your debt programs and programming in advance of this year because of this very reason, your fear, if that's what you want to call it, that there may be escalation in rates in the general municipal market and in other markets. And so, hats off to you for doing that because so far, you read the tea leaves right, and I could go back through what we locked in for you all, but it was super advantageous up against what we're seeing available in the market today. I wanted to hit two pages here real fast. I'll quit clicking around here in a minute. This is on page seven of my presentation. This is the bond buyer index, again, another index, and this is to really speak to just the general overall conditions in the muni market space. This is a 60-year history, 61-year history now, and you can see in the middle portion of the page there, this is a weekly index, so taken once a week, every Thursday. 97.5% of the time since 1961, rates have been higher, so put your newspapers down and your iPhones, and don't worry so much about interest rates at this point. It's still a very good time to be a borrower if, in fact, that's what you need to do in the muni space. And then I do get into the discourse around Fed speak on page eight. There's a lot of data here. A lot of this is interpretive data that comes from Bloomberg and a couple other sources we use that is predictive of what they think the Fed funds rate will do. And I put this in here because there's so much discussion about it. I wanted to be able to answer your questions, but I like the commentary in the top left, and the commentary basically says what I started off with, and that is that, yes, we do expect to see short-term rates rise, but we don't expect that to affect your debt programs, particularly a 10-year structure, and that's what we're going to talk about next. Mr. Kostlich went over each of these projects. We lay them out again for you on page 10. I do want to say, in addition... I do want to say, in addition to those two projects, we will come back to you in April for a parameters order that will authorize Mr. Kostlich or Mr. Atkinson to act on behalf of the council to issue bonds for these two projects. At the same time, we may present to you a second resolution that would allow for the refinancing of certain debt if in fact it's advantageous at the time. Right now, there are some marginal candidates, none that are worth speaking to tonight. But I've seen this so many times, the pendulum always seems to swing too far one way and comes back into order. And in the event that that happens, we'll have a list of candidates that you can refund but don't have to. We just want to be in a position to do that if it should be advantageous to the city. So that is spoken to in the third bullet point there. And we'll bring those forth at the next, not the next meeting, but when I'm back in April. And then finally, to just some preliminary numbers around this particular structure for these two projects. This is a 10-year structure issued with the underlying rating from Fitch and S&amp;P of double A. Double A, double A minus. I can't see that far anymore, so I wanted to get that right. And in the middle portion of the page, I've highlighted the all NTIC. And for those of you who are watching and may not recall, that is really, think of it as the APR. That has all the costs included. That's the time value of money applied. It's 2.02%. That's with a 25 basis point cushion. So you're really talking about 1.77% if you borrowed this money today. Obviously, we'll keep that in there as we work towards the goal of selling these bonds in April and closing in May. But that's what it looks like today. We have a calendar of events. It's rather small. There's a lot that goes on here. But we've highlighted in the shaded portions where you all will need to take action. And I said it earlier, I'll be back in April to go through the parameters orders. Prior to that, I'll work with Mr. Atkinson and Mr. Kostlich on your credit rating review. We do this annually anyway. It's more of a surveillance thing, particularly for a project size, which is relatively small up against what you all have done in the past. But we'll go through the process again with Fitch and S&amp;P. We'll deliver those results to you when I come see you in April. And then we'll have written reports around that at that time.
Mr. Bowles, if somebody was watching this closely and they said, well, that bond rating number or rate looks a little different than what I'm used to seeing. Remind folks, we have more than one rating. This is a separate rating we established a few years ago for water and wastewater. Is that correct?
That's correct. In fact, the city has two sets of ratings. One on your general obligation, and that's your ability to pay, repay based off your obligation to pay. And that is a double A plus rating by both of those agencies. This particular rating is double A, double A minus, one of which was upgraded in the last year. So you now have double A plus and notches below that, which is consistent with the way the world should see this. This lean, double A, double A minus. So.
Thank you.
And that's all about persistence and repetition and being in front of them every year through these surveillance ratings.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Questions for Mr. Bowles or Mr. Kostlich? All right. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good to see. Appreciate you. Counsel, we've got a resolution to approve that the publication, posting notices of intention to issue revenues, system, system revenue bonds for water and wastewater. Is there a motion to begin consideration of this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Ms. Joy and a second from Mr. Massengill. Okay. Counsel, is there any discussion on this one? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the resolution on item eight seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? All right. Motion carries six to zero. All right. Let's see. I think we've got, now we've got eight, eight. And a related. Is that right? Eight, nine are related, right, Josh?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay. So why don't you brief us on those? I think, as I recall, eight, nine, we, once we were setting a public hearing on that. First time we've been through this, so it's a good chance for us to learn on this. Josh, if you want to take it away, starting with eight, eight, that begins on page 665.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Good to be back again. This is item 8.8. This is an update to our impact fees. This is our semi-annual report. I'm just going to give you a brief history of where we came from, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Payne for that report. In May of 2019, the city of Lubbock executed a contract with Kimley Horn and Associates to pursue impact fees and an impact fee study. In June of 2019, council approved a capital improvements advisory committee, which consisted of Mr. Payne as the chair, Andy Bean now as the vice chair, Larry Bradley, Irene Cantu Franks, Jonathan Hill, Katie Soller, and Chris Berry.
Josh, do us a favor and advance your slide there, please, sir, if you would.
That would help, wouldn't it?
Thank you. Okay. All good. All good. We have to, Mr., I mean, Mr. Franklin often is on the wrong, he's on the wrong slide deck, so you're doing okay.
Pretty much a year after that, that committee was established, our land use assumption and capital improvements plan, our capacity plans, were approved by council in June of 20. With that, council approved impact fees on October 27th of 2020 with an effective date of June 1st, 2021, for roadways and June 1st of 2022 for water and wastewater, which the impact for water and wastewater is set at zero. Final plots and things that, final bullet point there, I think is very, very worth mentioning. It's worth mentioning for citizens is plots filed prior to June 1st were kind of grandfathered in with the grace period of one year, which that one year will be June 1st of 2022, which then we will start collecting impact fees on all of those if building permits are not issued before then. So in accordance with our local government code, is the need for this semi-annual report. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Payne for some of that information for you guys.
Thank you, Josh. Welcome back, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll read a few things into the record that come from our report. The roadway impact fee is being collected and maintained in accordance with state law and city code. Following three items tied to the next item on the agenda, we recommend a minor update to the 2020 roadway wastewater and water impact study to include the expansion and shifting of service area boundaries. Recommend updating the current rates in the expanded service areas and recommend an update to the ordinance to include provisions for future annexations. I'm going to come back to those in just a moment. Sorry. I will update you. You have in your packet of information on page three of the report, a representation of impact fees that had been collected as of January 12. Since that time, additional fees have been collected in service area A, an addition of $14,855.76 for a total of $30,791.46. And an additional collection in service area F for a total of $203,560.81 collected, which is an increase from the January 12 date of $175,816.38. I'll go back to those last three bullet points. They all relate to annexations that came forward. And when they did, the SEAC committee realized that there was a loophole in our ordinance that was not intended. And those, these recommendations are designed to close that loophole. I'll be happy to answer any detailed questions about that or stop now if you want me to.
Ms. Joy?
The service areas, A, can you, we don't have the map.
It's, it's, it's actually in front of us here, Josh.
Yeah.
I think it's several.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Sorry, I have to have technical assistance.
There it is. Okay, A. And then the other area is E.
F is the other one where fees were added. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So that's kind of west and southwest.
West, south, west, and south.
Yes, ma'am.
Which area, service areas would have to be, are they being changed because of annexation? Is that what you're telling us?
Yes, ma'am. So in our existing ordinance, we did not, we do not have language that automatically addresses additional annexation. And that left a loophole and an opportunity that if a developer annexed new land, and for example, if, if the land were annexed and the developer had an apartment site buyer at the ready, that tract could be sold and a permit applied for before that newly annexed area could be included into a collection of impact fees. That loophole was not intended by the SEAC committee, nor do I believe by the council to exist. So these recommendations are to close that so that any new annexations are automatically included into the adjacent service area prior to the effective date of annexation. And so that closes that loophole. And then that flowed into the necessity to relook at the, the boundaries of the service areas.
Well, I guess what I'm wondering is how it's going to affect the service areas because you've already got projects going on in some. So I assume you're going to keep, whatever projects there are within the service area that the funds have been contributed. But how are you going to change those, I guess? Is that something Kimley Horn would do?
Well, then, so the proposal that you have in front of you was shepherded by Jeff Whitaker with Kimley Horn, who did the original studies. So they went back and relooked at those studies to make these determinations.
Okay.
So the public hearing that we're going to schedule for March would allow us then to make these changes. It's not to add the water and wastewater at zero. It's really to make, to make changes to the ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Weaver? Mr. Payne, did you or staff have any discussions with our consultants about why something is like this bit of language in a growing city like Lubbock would have been overlooked? I know they're, I know we can bring them up by the power of Zoom. I really don't want to talk to them. But I know they're paying attention. But I mean, that, to me, seems like a pretty minor, is that, what happened there?
Well, Mayor, I think that the primary explanation is that service areas cannot be drawn to include anything that is not currently in the city limits. So when the service areas were originally established, we were limited to the city limits in establishing those service areas. So from there, the only thing that didn't happen is the question of what happens when a new annexation occurs and how does it come into the city and how does it come into a service area? And so right now, the annexations that have currently been underway don't occasion the extension of a service area to a size that would cause us to have to create a new service area. They simply have been included into the existing service areas. In the future, that could happen because we're limited to the six-mile limits. And so that could happen, but that's not part of what we're addressing here.
I guess I still don't understand how we missed something like that.
You mean the automatic inclusion?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be, I think, a question to address to Mr. Whitaker. It's not an issue that ever came up in our discussions in terms of.
I certainly don't, I certainly don't put it on the citizens group. You're just trying to advise.
Well, but it's a fair question for all of us. We were, we were certainly all there. And it's a fair question. But it's just, it's not, the idea that annexation would occur certainly was included in our discussions. But the specific path for how that occurs and the timing of it, and then how it gets included into the city limits and then the service areas, was just not something that was discussed.
Well, I don't think I'm the only one on this dice that's a little frustrated by the fact that somebody with a pedigree like this consulting firm, who we do lots of business with, would miss something like this. So I've said my piece, but it's in the record now.
Interesting.
Mr. Griffith?
Mayor, I would join you exactly in your remarks that it, to me, it should be automatic that if you, if you look at these new additions.
Until such time.
They have to, as Ms. Joy brought up in a previous discussion tonight, they have to be, an annexation has to be attached to, adjacent to a current city limit. So to me, it's a very obvious equation that the closest service area.
And there'd be some language in there that would speak to what Mr. Payne said about if it got to the point where we needed another service area. And I think that's actually already contemplated, but anyway, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate you bringing this up.
I'm not on the, this is not, don't take this as a criticism of the citizens group. We appreciate your oversight.
I'm not. Thank you, though, Mayor, for saying that.
We were, we were with you during this. So this is not just your team overlooking it. This is this body that, we missed that too. So, but you would think the consultant would have addressed this.
I totally understand your point. I will say this. As soon as we realized this was a problem, we set out to address it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, back to your, back to your comments around your semi-annual report. Anything else you want to add to that, Mr. Payne?
No, sir. I believe that's it. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so counsel, I believe that we have a resolution accepting this report. And then we would then move to the next item, which is to then call a public hearing, schedule a public hearing. Is it called a public hearing? Is that correct, Mr. Weaver? Did I have that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Two different items.
Okay. Counsel, so I'll open the floor for a motion to accept the report from the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. Thank you, Mr. Christians. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Further discussion on this, on item eight, eight. Okay, all those in favor of the motion which would accept the report, semi-annual report from the SEAC, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? The motion carries six to zero. Okay, let's move to item eight, nine on 673. Josh, what do you want to add, what do you want to add to what you've told us already?
You know, I think with this discussion, that's pretty much said it all. This, this comment right down here at the very bottom is the proposed change that we're wanting to add to the ordinance that helps with that process. Says in conjunction with the annexation process, prior to the final acceptance of annexed properties, the annexed property will be placed into the nearest adjacent service area as long as the service area follows the same criteria in chapter 395 of the local government code. The rates will be the same as the existing service area and will be readjusted at the next report revision. So that, this comment right here would allow us to look at the rates if it changes it. If it increases the service area, that rate will change. And so this, this will necessitate what we're trying to accomplish here.
And that, plus the changes on the map itself, that's the whole, that's the, that's the wholesale changes that we're making.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything for Josh? All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, counsel, we have a motion, item in front of us, to authorize the city council to hold a public hearing on March 22, 2022 to consider updates to the 2020 roadway wastewater and water impact fee study. Open the floor for a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Is there a discussion? I'm sorry, Ms. Joy? No, we had it on the previous, on the, except the report. Yeah. Good, good question. Okay, any discussion about the item to call this public hearing? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by that same sign? Okay, that motion carries six to zero. All right, let's go to item eight, 10. Counsel, last, this begins, by the way, on page 676. You'll recall at our last meeting, we spent some time in work session talking about council priorities, largely to go back and reflect on these and to confirm our priorities as to give council, or excuse me, to give staff. or excuse me, to give staff and, and our city team direction as they begin the budgeting process for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. I'll turn this over to Mr. Atkinson for a few comments. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. So Counsel, if you would, turn one more page to page 677. The resolution itself appears here. I'll quickly note the changes. One change was to take what's been a longstanding priority, that being public safety, and to pull it up and make it the first one on the list. So you see that there. The second, in our system of how we divide the budget and the divisions and so forth, public health is a component of public safety. I think with Counsel's guidance and discussion was that public health needs to stand on its own and be clearly identified. So you see that as number two. Moving down from that, fiscal discipline, also a prior one, communications, same, community improvement, growth and development, and finally economic development and redevelopment to include specific call out to North and East Lubbock. So with that, Counsel, at least matches our notes that we had as to the discussion, and open for your comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Counsel, comments, questions? Ms. Joy?
Since Mr. Bowles is here, we might talk about our fiscal discipline. I believe that we have done refinancing on about $567.2 million and have, have saved $50.3 million in present value interest, I guess. Mr. Bowles, is that correct? You would know, you've done all of these.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Yes, I would know. I don't have in front of me what you have in front of you, so I can't recall that off the top of my head, but.
But Mr. Kostalich does, yeah.
Leave it to a West Point grad to do this for his. Okay. We've got two sets of refundings that we've mapped for you all that go back to. I wish I had something about a flat squirrel, I'd say it right now just to fill the room up. It's a February 2022. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Thank you very much. We went back to 2015 and mapped your present value savings, Ms. Joy, on your refunding programs that you've done, and I'll speak to them in two broad categories. One is your geo-refunding, so just refunding of bonds that are paid from the general obligation tax rate of the city, and there are eight of those. And in amongst eight of those, the city has generated in gross savings over $44 million in debt service savings in present value savings. So that's present value in that number back to the very point at which you affected the refunding. It's almost 37 and a half million just on your geo-refundings. On your water and wastewater program, and to remind you, the mayor spoke to this earlier, you created this lien essentially in 2018, but implemented it in 2019. You've now effectuated four refinancing programs, not only to move debt from your general obligation to the water, wastewater system, but to take advantage of savings. You've generated almost $15 million in gross savings of, and, and that number present value back to the date of those issuances is almost 13 million. So in total present value savings in the last six years, seven, six and a half years, just over six years, sorry, is $50,331,356.
I would say that's pretty good, wouldn't you?
I like that number, yes, ma'am. I do. I think it's very good.
That's how much we save the citizens.
That's correct.
Of this city by doing these refundings.
Right. And you've been very systematic about this as we go along, and I spoke earlier to the fact that we will include possibly another resolution to take advantage of rates if they should be in order to, to refinance some bonds. And as you do that systematically and you move closer and closer through your, or, I'm sorry, you move through your total debt portfolio, you make it more efficient over time, the total cost of funds for the city of Lubbock's total debt portfolio is below two and three-quarter percent. So it's very good, and that's what it is. Lost my train of thought.
Sounds like Ms. Joy had her numbers right.
She did.
She had some notes up here. I don't know, I mean, I'm not sure who, who prompted her, but she had some pretty good notes.
She did.
Ms. Joy, anything else for Mr. Bowles?
No, and I appreciate what Mr. Bowles and his firm have helped us with. On these refundings, we do not extend the due dates. They stay just as they are. And so because one of our priorities is fiscal control and, and trying to save money, I think we, we need to remind people that we do this, and the reason that we do it is to save on interest that we would otherwise have to pay. If we were asleep at the wheel, we would just left them alone and just let them run. And so I commend this council for being on their toes and Mr. Atkinson and Mr. Kostalich for doing this for us because it's very important. There are some things we just have to borrow money for and to operate the city, which now is a whole lot larger than it was 10 years ago. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Other comments about the, the priorities? Ms. Joy, you okay with the way public health reflected there?
Yes, I, I thought we were going to kind of define it a little bit better under public health, what, what we were actually talking about in addition to just the health department, were we not?
We would certainly, but it wouldn't be in, on our, on our summary slide.
Summary, okay, all right, that's fine. No, that's fine. We, we absolutely have got to continue to do what we started out doing several years ago in supporting Catherine Wells and, and her department.
All right, other comments or questions for Mr., for Mr. Atkinson? Okay, is there a motion to, to begin consideration of this resolution? Thank you, Mr. Christians. There's a second? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Are there further comments or questions? The resolution on the floor would approve the 2022 priorities for Lubbock City Council. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? My motion carries six to zero. Okay, finally, we have item 811 on page 678. Now, this has been brought to the, put on the agenda by two members, by Mr. Massengill and Mr. Christian, and this is, I think, I think the very same resolution that we chose not to consider at our last meeting. I will open the, let's do this, let's get a motion on this.
Before you do that.
Ms. Joy?
I move to postpone consideration of item 8.11 until May 24, 2022, which is the date of the first regular meeting of the City Council following the swearing in of the newly elected mayor and members of the City Council.
All right, there's a, Ms. Joy's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's no, no discussion on that, just, just, okay, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by the same side?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson-Harris, how did you vote on that? Okay, all right, I just, I didn't think I saw you vote, I was just checking. We'll give you a moment. I appreciate your cand, your candor. Say it again?
I say that I'm ready.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to postpone until May 24, please say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed by the same side?
Aye.
All right, motion fails because it's tied three to three, correct? I'll open the floor for a motion to begin consideration of item 811. Is there a motion? Mr., thank you, Mr. Christians. There's a second?
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Okay, Mr. Massengill, Mr. Christian, make your, make your case for this.
On the heels of the decision to not move forward with, I recommended in the last meeting, I, I just felt that this was absolutely necessary, that for you get this committee going immediately so that we can move forward towards hopefully a bond election in November. There's a lot of work to do. We mentioned before that we had, we would approve this committee, but the members of it would not be appointed until the next council. But I do think that this is very important, that we do this now, that we make this resolution and we move forward with it immediately. Thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I, I tend to, I agree with you, obviously. I helped sponsor the, the item on the agenda. I think that when, if you were to poll our citizens today, that the single most important project on their mind is finding a solution for our streets. And I know that we have, I know I have, I know several of us have vocalized the mistakes, but I think we must continue to move forward on this. And time is of the essence, and time is worth money. And we've got, we've got to get this right. There have been opinions on this dais that this needs to wait to the next council. There's a high likelihood that the majority of the next council sits here tonight. The legacy of this council has been not to kick the can down the road. We, for some reason, we're taking the, the position to go ahead and kick this can down the road, and I think that we should involve the citizens and pick the work back up and get something ready for the council we will sit in May or June, could still be June, so that we can have the work done for a potential election, bond election in November, so that we can move forward with our street needs. If we wait until May or June to include the citizens to get this done, we, I, I don't see a way that we can be ready for November. So this council has been very good at being decisive. Let's not be the squirrel, be flat on the street. I would encourage my colleagues tonight to reconsider, let's not, let's move forward with this resolution, and let's get started with the Citizens Committee and get the work done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mass, thank you, Mr. Massengill. Ms. Joy?
Well, it appears we got in a hurry, and we got run over in the street and the bond failed. So that kind of works both ways. But what I heard Mr. Christian say was that the committee wasn't going to be appointed until after the election. I'm hearing different things from Mr. Massengill. My earlier motion was not to say we are not going to have a committee, it was to say we're going to wait until we have three or four potentially new members on, on council.
Let me clarify with Mr. Christian. Is that, I'm not sure I heard that. What, what did you say, Mr. Christian?
I heard it.
You heard what I said, but that was, I want to recant that because I didn't take into consideration the runoffs that we may have. With that said, if it was a regular one, that would be fine, but I think there's going to be runoffs and we cannot wait till June.
I'm just going by what the resolution says. That's why, that's why, that's why I was asking the question.
That's what I was looking at, and I didn't see that in the resolution. And so I'm still, first of all, I don't think we need a committee. The work was done, and what's holding that up is that the voters said no. And so they've spoken. I'm not opposed to looking at it again, but I think we need to do it in, in a different manner. And I still do not think that three members we know for sure will not be here on the new council. And so we will have three new people. And whether it's three new people or four new people, they should have a voice if we're talking about another bond election. So I, I haven't changed my mind. I'm going to vote against this proposal as it's worded. I was trying to give everybody an opportunity to go ahead and look at it from a different viewpoint. And I don't think we kicked the can down the road. We kicked the can, but it came flying right back at us.
Okay, other comments? I'd like to follow up, Mr. Mayor. Let's, let's hear, let's hear from Mr., go ahead, and then we'll get Mr. Griffith after that. Okay, Mr. Christian?
At our last meeting, when we went kind of around and we talked about, once again, the proposal that I made, I, I went back and looked at the, the video of the 25th, January 25th council meeting, and everyone at that meeting, except Ms. Joy, Mr. Chodas didn't make a comment, but everybody said, basically, we needed citizen input. And we needed it now, more than ever. If we wait till June to, to seat a, a committee, it's, I agree with Mr. Massengill, we need, we need to start this immediately. It's very frustrating when we hear our citizens basically begging us to listen to them, get their thoughts. And Ms. Joy wasn't here for the night of our, our town hall meeting. It was very clear that people were willing to start working on this right away. The other thing is, if we would have had a Citizens Committee prior to the November election, the way I'm most often was accustomed to having when I had my ad agency, we always had a Citizens Committee to help build that package and to advocate for it. We didn't have it. Shame on us. But now we have an opportunity to, to correct that and get a committee going right now towards hopefully a successful bond election in November for infrastructure that we don't have. It's already putting us way behind on infrastructure. We can't wait. We need to do this now. We need to gather these people together. They need to study this. They need to come back with recommendations. They need to be the advocates of whatever the final plan is. But to wait till June? No. I can think of a gentleman that most of us know on this dais, he's sold a lot of clothing, primarily men's apparel for years. A client of mine, a friend of mine, and an employer of mine, a guy named John Malouf, I'll never forget what he said to me one day. One of the most sincere forms of flattery is to ask when somebody, someone's their opinion. I doubt if that was original from, from John, but it was a good practice. That's what we're doing when we put this committee together. We want to know not only their opinion, but the opinion of a lot of other people that want to help us put this bond package back in front of folks, and let's get these streets and roads done now.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to correct Mr. Christian that I did not, and I repeat. I just want to correct Mr. Christian that I did not, and I repeat, I did not say that I was in agreement for a group. As a matter of fact, I was the only one on this dais that said, I say we take it back to a vote in May without a group. I specifically stated that there was a group, there was a committee that was formed to look at those things. I do not think that this council got it wrong with the items that were put on that for that bond election. I think there were some other things we could have done differently and better, but I don't think we got it wrong. I know that we are going to be looking at a different council in May. I still stand to think that we put it back before the folks in May. I know I don't have the support of folks, so I'll go to the next move. If we did not see as a council that this needed to go to a group of folks and stop it then, I feel like we thought we were doing the best thing that we could do. We made the best decision that we had at that time, and I don't think we got it wrong. I don't think with new folks coming on this council that we decide what they're going to do and say that they need to make the decision, but we're going to set it up for you. And when I heard you before, my understanding was, and even as I read it, is that we passed this resolution for it to be taken up in May, and that doesn't make sense for me. That's why I had to stop and think about my vote, to make sure what was what. But I did not at any time say that I felt like we needed to get a citizens committee. My last point, and I'll get out of the way. The night of the town hall meeting was not a representation of the citizens of this city. There were a few, some, I believe, that were handpicked to be there and provide their input. That is not the representation of the citizens of this city. That's all I have.
Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. Having citizen input's fantastic. This council's been, yeah, we've done wonderful with citizen input. Mr. Payne is a great example of that, as he spoke tonight and shared with his committees work. The main thing is, I am uncomfortable with putting a committee together from my standpoint, knowing that who sits in this seat futuristically, May or June, it's going to be their vote whether or not to call an election, what items to put on that bond, whether to call an election. So I feel like I'm not kicking the can down the road, I'm respecting District 3's seat, whoever that individual is, because the future council, I think, can make this. And I understand the needs don't change. We've studied it. What I understand is that the future council should have a voice in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
I need to correct one thing.
Ms. Joy?
One other correction, that town hall that was held was Mr. Christians' town hall? That was not the council town hall?
I don't think he said it was a council.
Well, he kind of inferred that.
I didn't hear that.
Call the question?
Can I make my comments?
No.
You okay there?
I'm in.
Thank you. I think there's, I think there's good points on both sides of this one. I do think that going to a citizens group is probably important. I think when you lose one, going back and doing it the very same way is a bit tone deaf. And I know neither man agrees with that, but I think that would make sense. I don't think, I do, I do agree that the data's not going to change, the needs aren't changing. I also lean towards appointing a group with the full knowledge that a new council could take that up or not take it up. I mean, much like we had a, we had a charter committee that worked really well prepping for State of the City, I went back and looked at some of their work. They did really good work. They worked very hard. We appointed one of the members tonight to one of our boards. I told her, thanked her for her service. So in that regard, you know, I think there's precedent even well before this council for councils listening to citizens but not moving forward. So I would tend to agree that we could appoint a group so they could go to work with the idea of maybe making November. I do think November's going to be very difficult to make otherwise. But that's just, those are my thoughts about it. It appears to me that we're probably deadlocked on this thing 3 to 3, but we will have a vote on this one. I'll ask for you to hold your hands up. We'll start with those in favor of the motion to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought you were just getting ready to vote. Mr. Griffith, you want to talk again?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Everybody wants to hear me one more time. Nobody needs to go home.
Your days are numbered, so I, you know...
So get ready. We'll pass the collection plate. For clarification, how long before you have, do you have before you call an election time-wise if we go to a November street bond again?
It will be, it will be in August date, like August 18th, but I don't...
Roughly mid-August, yeah.
Call the question?
All right.
Can I continue to speak? So it really doesn't, doesn't give enough time? Unless you take the existing work.
You're welcome. All right, all those in favor of the motion, let me make sure it's clear, this would be for us to appoint at our next meeting, a seven-member committee to review the work done by the future needs committee, feedback received otherwise since then, and make a report to a, to the new council by a certain date, which we get to fill in that date on the, on that resolution, which I assume we could do next week when we did our appointments. All those in favor of that motion, can we go ahead and set the date on that for that right now? Mr. Weaver?
I think you could do it either way.
Okay.
If you want to go ahead and see if it passes and then do it, that would be fine.
That'd be fine, okay. All those in favor of...
Before you do that, the committee can be appointed when the new council is seated, which would be...
That's not what, that's not what this motion is.
I understand that in response to Mr. Griffith's saying there's not enough time, the committee can be appointed once the new council is seated, which is sometime late, let's say, late May. So you've got, you've got...
I think you have a very good chance you're going to have a runoff, don't you think?
Well, either way, you're going to have June, July, August, September, October.
No, you'd appoint, you'd appoint somebody around the 1st of July and...
You'd have to have it finished by the 1st of August to call the election.
And the council's going to spend 10 days in budget during the middle of that time.
Exactly.
I just, that's just the calendar.
Out of respect for Ms. Patterson-Harris, she has called the question.
I'm with you. I was trying to get the vote. All those in favor of the motion, I think I restated it, all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All right, three in favor. All those opposed by the same side? Okay, motion fails in a tie, 3 to 3. I believe that takes care of our business tonight. Ms. Garza, is that it from you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Weaver, is that it from you? Okay. It's 7:21. Thank you, staff, for sticking with us tonight. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas, and we are adjourned.